Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, February seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle, here. Member Staunton, here. Member Stewart, here. Mayor Hovland, here.
We have in front of us this evening a revised form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the meeting agenda. Need discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say nay. Carried. We've got one piece of action underneath the approval of meeting agenda, and that is Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash twenty-seven, which is a housekeeping measure. It's the resolution approving the mayor's appointment of the commissioners of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. When members Staunton and Stewart were sworn in, this was something that we also needed to take care of, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash twenty-seven. All people can vote, all members, all council members can vote on this matter.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash twenty-seven. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say nay. Carried. Now, we've got in the audience this evening a group of government students, I think, and you guys all want to stand up so the other people in the council can see who's here. And you're going to watch a city council meeting this evening, your local government at work? All right, great. What's, anybody want to let us know what school you're from? Valley View? All right, good. Thanks, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I told them that extra credit goes to any one of them comes up during community comment to speak.
Oh, there you go. All right, for those government students, if you've got an agenda in front of you, you see that the next thing on the agenda is something called the adoption of the consent agenda, and then there's a whole list of items that carry over onto the next page. These are all handled on a single motion unless somebody on the council wants to remove an item from the consent agenda. So is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I want to remove four J, please, the Traffic Safety Committee report.
All right. Other than four J, is there any other matter that members wish to remove from the consent agenda? With the exception of four J, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of four J. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say nay. Carried. And then we'll go to four J. Member Brindle, the Traffic Safety Committee report has given you some concerns, apparently, or you want to make some observations?
I do. Thank you. There is some, you can leave it there, thank you. There is actually some action being taken on recommendation A-one. There's a petition that's in process about this requested street sign. They want to change the name of the street, and it's something that is going to take some time to do. So I would like to table A-one to allow that process to run its course, and then I would like to then move the rest of the traffic safety report, recommendation A-two, et cetera.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the safety, Traffic Safety report with the tabling of A-one. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say nay. Carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we're moving into the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and the first matter we have tonight is a report, we had it in front of us a few weeks ago, and then we decided to delay it till this evening. We've got Mr. Dick Carlstrom here to give us a mid-decade analysis of the Housing and Population Report, which deals with those issues in the, in our community. Mr. Carlstrom, welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. I'd like to give you a brief overview of some of the key points that we discovered in this analysis.
Mr. Carlstrom, would you give us your full name for the record and also your background, how you ended up doing this work for us?
Okay. My name is Dick Carlstrom. I'm an independent geographic consultant, and for a number of years, I'd been doing some demographic analysis for the Edina School District. It's my understanding that after some conversations with the superintendent of the School District and the city manager, that there kind of grew an interest to do some joint demographic analysis, since the boundaries of the district and the city, although are not exactly the same, are quite similar, and some of the issues of demographic concern might be similar. So with the help of the School District, we put together a project, and we've been working on it for about six or seven months now. So again, this is a great example of cooperation between the district and the city.
I was just going to chime in with that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that it was not just the Edina School District, but all three major school districts-
Yes.
-that have territory within our city. So we reached out to both the Hopkins and the Richfield District and got great cooperation from both of those districts to tell us how many kids from Edina are attending their schools. So those numbers are all incorporated into the data that you're going to see.
Yes, thank you. Part of the impetus for this was, is that we are kind of in the middle of the decade, and a lot of the data that was developed in the last decennial census would now be kind of out of date. So if we wanted a more current snapshot, what could we do about that? Again, looking at a mid-decade approach. So we decided to work with the data from the School Districts and some other local sources, pull that together, and let me give a little bit of structural background here first. We took all these different sources of data, and we aggregated them to a series of geographies called Census Block Groups. These, and I'll have a map of this in a few moments, but these are geographical units similar to your city neighborhoods. Now, they're not exactly the same, but what we did is we took these geographies similar to your neighborhoods, which have names, actually, they don't have names, they have seven-digit identifiers. We took them, we overlaid them on your designated neighborhoods, and then we renamed the Census Block Groups as per your neighborhoods, not exactly, but as they generally fit those areas. So I'm going to be talking about these Census Block Groups quite a bit in my presentation. The main things we wanted to look at was housing stock, births, deaths, some of the key demographic groups in the city, and then some of the dynamics that occur, particularly through home sales, and also the tear-down and rebuild activity that's been happening. I'd like to pose some questions, and you might want to think about these on your own and see if you can come up with answers before I show you some of the findings. But if you consider the last five years, which areas of the city, the younger or the older areas, do you think have the higher percentage of single-family homes with births? Secondly, if you look at May two thousand and fourteen, which areas of the city have the highest percentage of single-family homes with children of school age? Third, which areas of the city have the highest percentages, do you think, of single-family homes where there's at least one householder age fifty-five-plus? And finally, if you were going to look at a map of the tear-down and rebuild activity, what would that map look like? Okay, I'll get back to these questions in just a few moments, because I'm going to give you a few quick facts here. First of all, as a result of our analysis of some of the birth and death data from the Department of Health, we saw that through two thousand and thirteen, the city saw four-hundred-and-eighty-six births and four-hundred-and-fifty-eight deaths. So you have more coming in than you have going out, which is a good thing. About thirty percent of your single-family homes have households with school-age children. And again, this is the data that we got from the School Districts that was able to help us determine that. On the other end of the demographic age cycle, about fifty percent of your homes have households with a householder age fifty-five-plus. Sixty percent of the homes were built before nineteen sixty, and eleven percent were built since nineteen eighty. And this is a key fact, because when we develop a map, and I believe you have copies of the full report, early on in there is a map showing the median ages of the homes, that layout, that spatial configuration, is pretty much a template for the demography of the city, in that the age of the housing really shows you a lot of the demographic patterns that we'll see in just a few moments. We looked at home sales, sixteen percent of the homes sold between January one, two thousand and eleven, and June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, and through two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and the first six months of two thousand and fourteen, we have two hundred and sixty-seven building permits, most of that being tear-down and rebuild activity.
Forgive the interruption, the home sales, it's an odd period of time, January first, two thousand and eleven, to January, June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Is there a particular reason why that time period was selected?
It was the most current data we had from the tax records.
Right.
The, there's always a certain amount of lag in the tax records. We wanted to come up to date as soon as we could, and that was the most reliable data that we had. Now, are the maps being projected? Yeah, I put the map here. Okay. I was talking about these, what we call the Census Block Groups, mentioning that they kind of generally adhere to your designated neighborhoods. This map B from the final report shows those particular neighborhoods. And again, all the data is pretty much aggregated towards those. Looking at the question that I posed to you about births, this is map E from the report, and what you see is the various neighborhoods or Census Block Groups colored by virtue of percent of single-family homes with births, and this was during a five-year period, September one, two thousand and eight, to August thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. And what you see is the highest concentrations of births in the eastern and a little bit of the central area there of the city. We have the neighborhoods in the northeast corner, and then we have Brookfield in that particular area there. Now, we do have a high density and a high percentage here also down in the southeast corner, but there actually aren't all that many homes or births in that particular area, so that's kind of an anomaly. But again, we see greater number of births in the eastern areas of the city. I don't have a map of the percentages of single-family homes with school-age children, but generally, that map follows this pretty closely also. So a distinct pattern, higher densities, higher percentages of births and households with single-family homes with children in the eastern areas of the city. So to look at the reverse of that, here is the map for single-family homes where there's at least one householder age fifty-five-plus. And we do have some high percentages in the eastern areas, the Southdale area and Edinburgh Park, but again, those are anomalies, because there's actually very few homes and very few people in those areas. But the pattern here is, is that we now have higher percentages in the west, this being of the single-family homes with at least one householder fifty-five or older. So the pattern's the reverse. The younger populations are in the eastern areas of the city, the older populations in the west. Finally, we did take the new building permits. We mapped those, and we do see a higher concentration of those in the northeast areas of the city, and again, some in the northwestern areas also. Okay, those were just some of the highlights of the project and of the report. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Carlstrom? Anyone? All right, good. Well, we thank you for your, your work on our behalf, and this is all interesting data, and I'm sure we'll be using it in many different ways as, as we move along here. I don't know if the manager has any comment regarding this work that was performed.
We appreciated the chance to have this work done by Mr. Carlstrom, and it was very important to the School District as well, and they were able to make some really interesting use of it by, by almost using some predictive demographics in here, looking at the price of a, of a property or the size of a property, and, and getting an understanding of how many school-age children are likely to be in that property. And so, in that way, it was, it was useful, very useful.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Carlstrom, thank you very much for coming over this evening. All right, next up, we've got our communications coordinator, Jordan Gilgenbach, who's got a couple of interesting topics for us this evening. At least one that people have been watching, and that's the food liquor ratio.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Like the mayor mentioned, my name is Jordan Gilgenbach. I'm one of the communications coordinators here at the city, and I'm here tonight to present on the January two thousand and fifteen Speak Up Edina Report. Speak Up Edina is the city's civic engagement website we've had since June two thousand and twelve, and throughout two thousand and fourteen and through the rest of two thousand and fifteen, we're holding monthly discussions on the website to gather feedback on various topics. January's having been the food-to-liquor ratio. This may sound familiar to some, as about the same time last year, we did a similar discussion where we asked residents what they thought about changing the current ordinance, just tweaking, tweaking it from the sixty-fourty rule to maybe something maybe less or more restrictive. This discussion, we took it a little bit of a step further. After the city of Minneapolis voters in November voted to change their liquor ordinance to get rid of a food-to-liquor ratio, we wanted to see what Edina residents would think of if Edina did the same, and so we asked those same sort of questions. What do they think if we eliminated that connection between food and liquor sales, whether or not residents would welcome bars or maybe taprooms? Obviously, that would create a little bit of issues when it comes to liquor licensing, but if anything ever comes of that, that would have to be worked out. And then what any, any sort of concerns that they would have if this sort of a ratio was eliminated. The discussion was open from New Year's Eve to February second. We've got a little over a hundred comments on there, sixteen hundred visitors with a total of twenty, twenty-one hundred visits, and just shy of seven thousand page views. During the same time, we did have another discussion that was quite active for the redevelopment of the former Coho Book Works site that's on the site, and it is still active as we speak. This discussion, or during that time period, we had forty-one percent of people visit more than once, and the majority of respondents were from Edina. There was one outlier, it looks like, up in the northwest metro. In the comments that we received, of the fifty-six that responded, whether or not we should eliminate that ratio, there were only two people that were not in favor. So the overwhelming majority were in favor of eliminating that, that sort of, or that ratio that currently exists. They, a few comments that did come up, they don't want to see Edina become something like the warehouse district where we're being, where we've got a lot of actual bars. They think that the city is not as competitive, especially at Fiftieth and France, or along the borders with cities, other cities who may have more relaxed liquor laws. It kind of puts, they think that the, puts those businesses in that area at a little bit of a disadvantage, and they just generally think that the law that we currently have is old and antiquated. When it comes to bars and taprooms, the majority seem comfortable with bars and/or taprooms. Again, the, the comments are all in your packets, but people were either for just taprooms, but not so much bars that don't serve food. That was a big thing, is that they'd want to see food be sold at an establishment, not just liquor only. Again, they don't see the need for just bars without food, and that they think that taprooms are, given the craft beer booms that are going on in the Twin Cities and around the, around the country, they think that, that taprooms are very attractive to young, and they can drive business from outside Edina. You see that with a lot of the other taprooms that are in, in area cities. They didn't have a lot of concerns either. They did mention that the city and the police department should plan for staffing and funding for prevention and enforcement of DWI laws, possibly funded through license fees, taxes, and fines. A few people did bring up intoxicated driving, and other concerns are that just Edina is lagging behind our neighbors around us. And right now, that, we've got another discussion going on right now, which is on drive-throughs. That one will go through the end of this month. We're asking whether or not residents are in favor of drive-throughs, if we should look at them differently. Then, like I said, that's open till the end of the month. So with that, I'll stand for any questions on this topic.
Questions for Jordan? All right, this was some interesting work, and of course, it, it follows hand-in-glove with some of the conversations we've been having with the Minnesota Restaurant Association. I think Dan McElroy has been visiting with our manager about some of the trends that they're seeing. I don't know, Scott, if you'd care to opine on that.
He, he has, and he is aware that, he has a fairly good membership base, I believe, in the city, and he has expressed an interest in participating in the process that the council, that I outlined for the council last time, to review our liquor ordinance and regulations. So I expect you'll be hearing more directly from Mr. McElroy in the very near future.
All right, good. For the students in the audience, we have a, what's called a food liquor ratio, where for all of the restaurants in town that, that sell alcohol, sixty percent of their sales have to be food, forty percent, no more than forty percent liquor. So Minneapolis has eliminated their ratio, and, and so as you go right across France Avenue to the east, there are competitors of restaurants in Edina there, subject to that same sort of limitation. So a little place like a wine bar on France Avenue on the Edina side that might sell a twelve-dollar meal and a twelve-dollar glass of wine, you can see they've got a ratio problem right there just off a single meal. So we're trying to decide, we will be deciding as a council if we want to change that food liquor ratio without changing the way, without changing the ambiance, for example, of Fiftieth and France. How do we keep that same feeling down there without having it turn into something that's more akin to what somebody expressed as a concern to being the warehouse district or the, or the North Loop, where it's, where it's just bars and no foods? So this will be an interesting issue for us to work on. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to get a Braemar Master Plan update. I see a few of our task force members in the audience. Paul Prestus, if you want to stand up, Paul, and Rick Itis, and I don't know if there's anybody else in the audience or not, but I want to thank, point out those two guys and thank the whole task force, they're doing a terrific job for, for our community. And I'm going to bring up Joe Boot, our general manager at Braemar. He's busy all winter out there with the tin fish improvements that are going on, and as we work on this master planning for Braemar, he's been able to bring our golf course architect up here, Richard Mandell from Pinehurst, North Carolina, is going to make a presentation this evening. So Joe, go ahead and introduce the topic.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My name is Joe Boot. I'm the general manager of the Braemar Golf Course, here tonight to offer an update, update on the master plan process for you. No action is required tonight, this is just to get your feedback on some of the concepts that Richard Mandell has created for us. We wanted to present seven concepts for your, for your review tonight, and once again, just like the mayor said, I want to thank the members of the task force. They've been working extremely hard on this process. They've been at it for seven months, meeting very regularly, so they've done a great job. Rick Itis, the chairman, Paul Prestus, and everybody else on the task force has done a fabulous job in pulling this together. I'm here tonight to answer any operational questions that you may have, after you've reviewed some of the concepts that Richard's going to have. But now, I'd like to introduce Richard Mandell. He's our golf course architect from Pinehurst, North Carolina.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Welcome, Richard. Good to see you again.
Glad to be here. It's my honor.
It is.
It is, okay, good. Glad to be here, get out of the terrible weather in North Carolina of two inches of ice and twenty degrees, and people knew I was coming out, they said, "Thank God, you can get out of this mess we have." So I'm a golf course architect from Pinehurst, North Carolina.
You folks can tell he's got a sense of humor. It's a good one.
Okay, I was about to say, he didn't say "good" yet, but that's good. And I just wanted to sort of give you an update as to what we've been working on for the city of Edina for the last six months or so. It's a renovation business plan report, and what that is, is sort of a master plan for the whole golf course property at Braemar, excluding the driving range and proposed par-three golf course. That is not in our scope of services. So I wanted to just back up and tell you a little bit about the process, how I've gotten here, and then show you some of our findings. We came up in the fall, Ben Hood, who works with me and I, and we conducted numerous walk-throughs and focus group meetings with city staff, Braemar Golf Course staff, and the task force, and golfers, and citizens. And we walked the golf course numerous times, and I really just sat back and listened. That was my goal, was to really hear what the citizens of Edina thought about their golf course, and from big picture to very little, very small details. And of course, I was walking the golf course as well at that same time, and had my ears open, and took all this information, and now I've developed, I'm developing a renovations business plan and a report. And typically, we just do one plan that shows our ideas for improvement of the golf course. But for the city, upon your request, we've expanded that to actually do six different concepts that are much bigger picture than, than a typical renovation business plan process, of six different new layouts for Braemar Golf Course. And so what I'd like to do is to show you quickly what the report will be. We are about a week away from completing the report in rough draft form, and that, at that point, we will send it up here for everyone to, to review, and then we'll finalize that report shortly thereafter. So, so we start, you know, basically analyzing the situation, and we have an executive summary that sort of explains what our goals are with this report and how we got to that report. We discuss general design and maintenance issues for the golf course, specifically irrigation system issues, general tee complex issues, general sand bunker issues, greens complex issues. And then we also talk a little bit about the Clooney Nine. There are three nines out there, the Castle Nine, the Hayes Nine, and the Clooney Nine. The original eighteen holes are the Castle and Hayes nines that were built back and opened in nineteen sixty-four, and then the Clooney Nine came on board in the early to mid-nineties. And a lot of the concern that we heard from the golfers was that the Clooney Nine holes was not up to the standards of the original eighteen holes, and in fact, has sort of brought the original eighteen holes down for a variety of reasons. And through my study of everything, I came to one conclusion, is that there's a sentiment in, in, in our industry that golf is, is suffering, and that sort of happened in about two thousand and eight. And it coincided with the economic drop that we had experienced as a country. It also started slipping after nine eleven. But numbers show that at Braemar, golf rounds peaked in nineteen ninety-seven, and then have fallen steadily since. So that tells me that golf rounds in Braemar have slipped not because of the overall national situation of golf, it was something, something more local. And from what I've been hearing from people is, I assume that it's the honeymoon after the Clooney Nine, which opened in ninety-four. And since then, since ninety-seven, rounds have slipped because the, of the dissatisfaction with Clooney Nine, and how that's bled into the other courses, or the other nines. We also, throughout our report, explain certain environmental and zoning issues such as floodplain issues. A hundred and sixty-five acres of Braemar Park properties within a hundred-year floodplain, which limits the ability to move dirt on-site, particularly with the Clooney Nine holes. There's much wet, many acres of wetland and wetland buffers on-site. The Nine Mile Creek watershed district is, runs through there. And so we had to analyze what kind of wetlands we have and how that's going to affect any future design. Slope development issues. We reviewed some of the permitting for the, from the Clooney Nine addition, talk about tree issues, and oak savanna and oak woodland issues. So, as well as the age of the golf course features, greens, tees, bunkers, irrigation, et cetera. Then we, so that's all of our analysis, and then we're going to get into general renovation solutions for the golf course. And we've come up with a plan. It's called a renovation business plan, and of course, the report is what I've been talking about here. And the renovation business plan is basically taking all of the ideas that we heard from everyone, and putting my professional assessment into it, and sort of mixing it up and coming up with a game plan. And so this renovation business plan is sort of the path of least resistance, not completely changing the golf course, but it gives us a baseline to start when we're going to show you- but it gives us a baseline to start when we're going to show you the other design concepts, which are a bit more involved. We go hole by hole. One side of our V report will show what the existing holes are like, talk about the specific design issues and maintenance issues. And then we propose something different for each golf hole and describe it and come up with solutions. And these solutions, we actually classify as immediate, midterm, or long-term concerns. So this report and the subsequent six plans basically will give the city of Edina all the information that it needs to make the right decisions for the future of Braemar Golf Course, whether the city wants to spend $10,000 or much more. So we go through each hole and I, of course, won't go through all of these holes. Joe said I only have two and a half hours. I only need two hours and 29 minutes to get through this. And the hush comes over the crowd. Okay, then we talk about the design style of the golf course and the proposed course setup, which is how the greens will be maintained, how the fairways are maintained, how the rough is maintained. Our charge throughout all of this is to create a facility that works for all ages and abilities of citizens of Edina. We've been working with bar engineering and they've been working on an assessment of the property and we're creating, part of this is an ecological enhancement plan or management plan. Then we're actually going to come in and prioritize every single tee complex on the golf course in immediate, midterm, or long-term rankings. We're also going to do the same thing with bunkers and putting greens as well. We lay out all the quantities when we do our design work, even though it's preliminary and it's a master plan level, I get into very detailed design. Because a master plan is only good, it's only a picture on the wall unless you get into the details of how much something might cost to implement. So what I'd like to do is, so that's our renovation business plan. I'm going to back up real quickly here and go back to the renovation business plan itself. If I can find it quickly here. Okay. So the renovation business plan basically looks at playability, strategy, and aesthetics, et cetera, et cetera. And so this layout here that I'm showing you doesn't have many very radical changes to it. I won't get into some of the details, but what we have done is change a few holes so that it, the pace of play is quicker, changed a few holes so there are safety issues that are dealt with, and also tried to improve the Clooney Nine as much as we can within the limited space that we have. So that's our renovation business plan. Now what I'd like to show you now are the six concept plans that we have come up with as well. Option one is a 27-hole golf course. You have a 27 regulation hole golf course, but nine of those 27 are looked upon a little bit less favorably than the original Castle and Hayes nines. So my first charge was, let's see what we can do within the property boundaries to create 27 new regulation golf holes, three nine-hole loops of equal measure. And they are of equal measure as well as above of what you have right now. And so those 27 holes basically take a lot of the elements from the renovation business plan as well as some new elements. And we utilize some extra land on both sides of the property to expand the golf course, make it a little bit longer, but also try to change some of the inherent problems that are in the layout, which is pace of play and difficulty and mostly difficulty for the Clooney Nine. So I won't go into the details, but you have all of the routings. So the only way to improve safety issues and to make the golf course a bit longer than it is today, which is somewhat necessary with the advent of technology and golf equipment, we need more land. So we've utilized some of the extra acres of Braemar Park to achieve this. So our next option takes that same concept of 27 regulation holes and basically puts it back within the footprint of where the golf course is. And we're not utilizing land over here on the east side or on the west side. We're trying to keep the land, keep the new 27 holes within the existing footprint of the golf course. Down here on the south side of the property is the area that I would call, and many people in the room and part of this process would say, is the most challenging piece of property on the golf course. Very hard, the golf holes are very narrow, hard to play, hard to grow grass, there's no topsoil. So we had to do a lot of, you know, my focus was to try to make this section much more playable. And we've been able to do that in both routings. Option three is an 18-hole golf course with a nine-hole executive course. You are, I'm sure you're familiar with the current nine-hole executive course at Braemar, which is up in this corner. And an executive course simply is a golf course that is shorter than a regulation golf course. And most golf courses in the country, we know as regulation golf courses. When we see golf courses on TV and the professionals playing, they're all playing regulation golf courses. An executive course got its name from, in the 60s, it was designed so that executives can play a quick nine holes sometime during lunch. And so it's a shorter golf course. So we came up with 18 regulation holes and then a nine-hole executive hole layout. And one of the things that that allowed us to do is to pretty much take out this southern portion of the golf course, the area that's most difficult to give decent conditions. And so the thought process there is, as this executive course becomes a par three, then the nine-hole executive can be a step up for golfers who are learning the game. They master the par three course, although we never master golf, but we think we master the par three course. And then we go to the executive course, and then we would go to the regulation golf course. So that's what the thought process is there. Option four is, what if we just took the property and we built 18 new golf holes? And we didn't have 27 holes. And that's what we're showing there. What that allows us to do is, again, opens up this area to the south for what I'm calling an environmental education area, but more importantly, gets a very difficult growing environment out of the golf course. And then this area up here in the northeast corner, that can be parkland that could be used for a variety of things, golf-related activities such as disc golf, fling golf, foot golf, which is soccer on a golf course, sledding and tubing, walking trails, picnic areas, et cetera, et cetera. It opens up the property for a little bit more. And then option five is that same 18 holes, but with minimal disturbance. If we go back real quick, I utilized some land on the east side for the new 18-hole regulation golf course in option four. Option five is taking that 18 holes and again, putting it just inside the current footprint of the overall golf course. It still allows us for more parkland in the northeast and an environmental education area in the south portion of the property. And then option six is an 18-hole golf course, but with a four-hole practice loop. One of the big trends in golf right now is practice. People don't have the time or don't want to dedicate their time to full 18 holes, but they love to hit golf balls and they love to practice. So the concept here is, let's create a great 18-hole golf course, but also come up with a four-hole practice loop to complement the driving range and the par three course. And so it's almost like, I think somebody called it a golf village early on in our process. And so that is our, those are the six different concepts that we came up with for the, for the city. In each one of these options also, we've created walking trails. And they vary a little bit. We worked with bar engineering a bit and took some of their information in the existing walking trails and worked to come up with some walking trails that would be another amenity for the citizens of Edina, but most importantly, would not affect the golf course. Obviously, we don't want people walking on trails throughout the golf course. You can't use the existing cart path or things like that. So as I mentioned earlier, the renovation business plan itself gives the city options, financial options, from spending, if they want to just spend $10,000 fixing one or two bunkers, the report will direct you to say, "These are the two sand bunkers that need to be fixed," all the way up to one of these options. And so I'm going to go through and just give you some numbers as to what our estimates are. And to show you how detailed our estimates are, we have over 100 different line items that we look at when we come up with cost estimates. So it's not just a number out of the air. It's actual quantities, actual unit prices from projects that we've done in the past, in the area, as well as elsewhere in the country. And so our numbers are very accurate. And one of the things, one of the reasons I think the city hired me is my reputation as, we're always at or under budget with our projects. And it starts with detail at this level. So I wanted to show you that. All of these items here are very detailed. And the report will have cost estimates in here. So coming back to the plans, the renovation business plan, if the city decides to do work at Braemar that touches the whole golf course and closes down for a specific period of time, at the very least, the city should at least rebuild the greens complexes, all the greens on the golf course, all the sand bunkers on the golf course, and clear a certain number of trees on the golf course. Now I am a certified arborist as well as a golf course architect. I've been hired to do a tree management plan for the city as well, which I'm working on, but the winter has put that on hold. Although I was out there today looking at a few trees. I'm just kidding. So number one would be just greens, bunkers, and clearing. And that project would cost $2.2 million. The next logical step up for the city is to do the greens, the sand bunkers, clearing, but also do tee complexes and a new irrigation system, which would be $4.9 million. Now tee complexes are an integral part of this project, of any of these options, because what we do is something called tee shot distance equity. And the concept is to try to rebuild tees and locate tees in places so that all golfers of all ages, gender, and abilities have the same experience, provided they're playing from the right set of tees. And that is going to bring more, bring the majority of people to come to play at Braemar, no matter what their talent level will be.
Richard, what's the cost, estimated cost of the new irrigation system? Would you replace one that's 30-some years old?
Yeah, I have a line item in here of $2 million for irrigation system, which runs through all of these options.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And that comes from Tom Swenson, who's already done some homework on that, just purely estimate numbers. Once we get into further design, I expect that that number should come down a bit. The next option, okay, so we did greens, bunkers, clearing, tees, irrigation for $4.9 million. The next logical step up is greens, sand bunkers, clearing, tees, irrigation, wall-to-wall cart paths, and proposed oak savanna restoration areas, which I'll get into in a few minutes. That is $7.15 million. Now wall-to-wall cart paths is a big number. It's almost about a million dollars possibly, or at least half a million. But in listening to the needs of the citizens and the wet nature of the golf course, we felt it was necessary to put wall-to-wall cart paths in as an option because that will also keep golfers playing in less than perfect conditions and continue to keep revenue going. Then the next option there is the whole, the whole plan, everything we haven't included, so would bring it to $7.8 million. And that's for 27 holes. So there's one, two, three, four, five steps from $2.2 to $7.8 million for renovating the existing 27 holes at Braemar Golf Course without fundamentally changing the majority of the golf holes. And so at the end of that, the Clooney Nine is still the Clooney Nine with the exception of a few changes that we've made, which is down here in the southern part of the project. The island par three, we've eliminated and broken up the long par five on the far east of the property into a par four and a par three. So those changes are somewhat small in the grand scheme of things, but will help with playability greatly with Clooney. Option one, the new 27 holes, to redo 27 golf holes out there, new routing and everything, is $8.35 million, which is just about half a million dollars more than just a renovation business plan. But what it does is it substantially elevates Braemar Golf Course. And it pretty much solves all of the concerns that golfers have, including a brand-new nine to replace the Clooney Nine. And the sentiment that I heard from many of the citizens is, if we just fix the Clooney Nine, rebuild greens and bunkers and all that, it's still the Clooney Nine, and they still might not migrate back to the Clooney Nine. So with the 27 regulation holes, we've created three equal nines. And it's only a half million dollars more to implement that. Option two is that same option of 27 new holes, three nines, but with minimal disturbance. That is eight, just over $8 million. Then option three, which is 18 holes and a nine-hole executive course with minimal disturbance, that is $8.1 million. So that's not that much difference. So when we talk about 27 regulation holes versus 18 holes and a nine-hole executive, the cost doesn't really vary. But what happens with a nine-hole executive course is, you are going to minimize a certain segment of the population that doesn't want to play an executive golf course. Option four is just a new 18-hole regulation golf course. Obviously, we're building 18 holes instead of 27, but it's not 2/3 the cost. The cost is $6.2 million, which is about 20, 25% less than a 27-hole golf course. And the reason that is, is because we are pretty much, the limits of disturbance is the whole entire piece of property. So even though we might not have golf holes in certain places, we still have to rehabilitate those areas for oak savanna restoration or other ideas. Option five is 18 holes with minimal disturbance. And that actually is about $100,000 more than 18 holes without minimal disturbance. That is at $6.36 million. And the reason it's more expensive is because we also have more oak savanna restoration area, and that costs a little bit more money. And then the last option is option six, which is the 18 holes with a four-hole practice loop. And that concept is $6.75 million. So one last thing I want to talk about is, if we go to one of these concepts here, if you see on your screen and up on the big screen, lots of green, but the yellow-green areas are what we're calling oak savanna restoration areas. Now, in, when the golf course was built in the 60s, there was a trend that's continued really to this day of, let's maintain and maintain manicured turf throughout the golf course, whether it's a playing surface or not. And that costs money. So one of the things that we do as just standard operation for our renovation business plan process is see where we can take areas of highly maintained turf out and replace it with something that's less maintained, that takes less intensity. We call them no-mo zones. And they take on their own look depending on where we are in the country, whether we're working in Minnesota or Georgia or North Carolina or Cleveland, Ohio. And so here was a logical step to utilize these areas to create more oak savanna. And that's what we've done. So each of these concepts has oak savanna restoration as part of the process. And onsite here, if you look to the east, to the west, we have what's called oak savanna. And to the right, we have what's called oak woodland. And I just want to explain the differences between the two. A prairie, whether we're talking Minnesota or Wisconsin or anywhere, a prairie basically is a piece of property that has 10% of its site treed, and 90% or more is open space. An oak savanna has that same piece of property with 50% or less of the property covered by trees, whether it's oak trees or other trees. An oak woodland is that same piece of property, but more than 50% of that area is covered by tree canopy. So although there is an oak savanna classified here to the west, both the oak savanna to the west and the oak woodland to the right are really oak woodlands because the majority of the property is covered. Now, this is an aerial photograph from 1947. And here's the west area here. And here is the eastern area here. The clubhouse will be here in about 17 years. And this is the big hill in the middle of Braemar, if you're familiar with the site. You can see how open the site is. And it truly has oak savanna. This area here was never a golf course, but it's become woodland over time. Oak savanna's lost, been lost over the last 100 years, basically because it used to be that natural fire would eliminate a lot of the invasive species of an oak savanna. But as people inhabit these areas, we limit fire and so other species can start growing there. And so this piece of property, we actually counted- And so this piece of property, we actually counted every tree on the site. There were 1,843 trees onsite, and seven and a half acres of property just north that are pretty wooded. So by our calculations, 13.6% of the site is wooded. Now, fast forward to today, and there's 170 acres of the 445 acres of Braemar Park that are wooded now. And I think it's about 38% of the site. Yeah, 38.26% of the site. So as you can see, this site was chosen for numerous reasons, but one reason it was chosen was because of lack of tree cover. And in golf course construction, clearing trees is a big cost. And so most pieces of property for golf courses that are built are on open land, which this is. But over time, tree canopy has grown. Our concepts, our design concepts, will actually improve the oak savanna and restore oak savannas. We're proposing to restore this whole area as oak savanna, as well as some of this area as oak savanna. But more importantly, we are also going to take the golf course and take it from what it is right now, and really work to make it an ecological enhancement site. In addition, oak savanna, so throughout this area, we are clearing some, but for the most part, we're also, we're going to increase the oak savanna in a big way. And I think you have the numbers on that. There's only one concept, one of our concepts is 14 acres of tree removal, but in that same concept, we have 20.6 acres of oak savanna restoration that we're proposing. There's going to be a net gain. The other options, and I'll go through them quickly, the ratio is four acres of removal to 16 acres restoration, 1.4 acres to 17.6 acres of restoration, 1.44 acres of removal to 23.4 acres of restoration, 11 to 40, 2 to 33, and then 2 to 31. So in addition, oak savanna restoration, we also proposing to remove a lot of the invasive species around the wetlands, and replace that with more appropriate plantings as well. So regardless of golf, this site will return a little bit back to its original character here in Adana. So that's an added bonus for this golf course project, because golf and nature work together. They're perfectly in, in a perfect symbiosis, I guess you can say there. So that's my, my quick update.
Questions for Richard, also member Stuart?
Richard, I did a walkthrough with you out there one time, and enjoyed what I learned out there. One of the things, just to reemphasize, you are a trained arborist and licensed as an arborist. There was, I believe, an intention to do some thinning of some of the copses of trees that are there, but real emphasis on preserving some of the magnificent oak trees and some of the other real charac, nice character trees that are there. And I think that's important for people to understand. So I appreciate that part of your qualification and your intentions there. May I assume that if cost were not a factor, that option one would be your preference?
I think option one, I've got two preferences. Option one, purely as a golf course architect, who wants to design the greatest golf course possible, you know, the option three, or option four of a new 18-hole regulation golf course is a great, it would be one of the premier golf courses in the state of Minnesota. That, and elsewhere really. That said though, I had mentioned that I felt that, based on my studies and meetings with everyone, that golf at Braemar slipped in 97, I mean, that's a fact, but because of the disdain for the Clooney 9. So I feel, even though, a lot of people, even though we hear golf courses are closing throughout the country, which is a good thing, because golf has been overbuilt, that doesn't mean that golf is overbuilt in Adana. And knowing, working with Ramsey County, Minnesota, Keller, I've grown to appreciate the passion that Minnesota golfers have, or Twin Cities golfers have. And I think that there's plenty of golf to be had if you have 27 holes. So beating around the bush, option one, for the, economically, I think 27 holes would probably be the best option.
And well, and your comments are anticipating some of the direction where I'm heading here. Do you have any ability to estimate the cost reduction that would be achieved by doing some of this, the maintenance savings, because you do the oak savanna instead of having an area that needs to be mowed once in a while?
I don't have specific numbers of how much it would, how much money would be saved over time. We can get with Tom Swenson and work on some of that. But the bottom line is, let's just take option one as an example, okay? We won't have exact numbers, but we're talking about 20, 21 acres of oak savanna restoration area that would only require mowing once a year, whereas those same areas are probably mowed once a week right now during plays, playing season. So I don't know what that would be, 30 weeks maybe, 40 weeks. So there's significant savings of mowing 20 acres less.
To answer your question a little bit, right now, we're in the middle of building Performers, working with Eller's Financial, and we're going to have that data for you shortly.
All right. Thank you, Joe. And then, I have a kind of a compound question here. I'm curious about what would it take in terms of, especially if we had a 27-hole option, what would it take to restore golf to be a break-even enterprise in Adana? What does it take to get the tee times filled up for all 27 holes if we choose to go that route? Does it take some marketing? And maybe you're not a marketing expert, but you know a lot about golf, maybe you can enlighten us.
It does. I mean, I can design the greatest 27 holes in the world, but if people don't know about it, they won't get there. And so the city has to spend money, not a lot of money necessarily, but the city has to spend money and let people know about the changes at Braemar, and have a fully functioning marketing plan for the golf course, and I know Joe's working on. And the combination of a great product, but marketing to let people know about that great product is going to be a winner. So that is a part of it. If people just hear that Braemar's been renovated, and it stops there, they're going to think that the existing 27 holes are still there, how much better could it really be? But what we need to do is, show them how much better it can be. And I'll work with you guys, as part of my process, because I have everything to gain as well, to let people know how good Braemar, the new Braemar Golf Course can be.
So you don't think curious golfers would just try it once, because they're curious and then make their own judgment?
Oh, yeah, without a doubt. Curious golfers will try it once, but we want to market to the people who aren't curious. We want to make them curious too. So, I know at Keller, and we redid Keller Golf Course for Ramsey County, and we, upon opening till the day they closed this year, they had 300 rounds. So they have a built-in, you know, a built-in audience, just like you guys do, and it just took off from day one. And I'm sure Braemar will also. That said, there should be a percentage of money to be utilized to market the golf course.
And so one of the theories I heard when I was at one of your sessions was, people weren't having fun playing, particularly because the Clooney 9 was especially difficult. And, and so if we want to make the golf, the round of golf, an enjoyable experience, no matter how that is, and people didn't want to have the crapshoot if, on which nine they were going to be assigned to play, everybody would be requesting the Hayes 9 and the Castle 9, and nobody wanted to play the Clooney, because it just wasn't that much fun for them, with the exception of one or two expert golfers who were there. And so if we were to do this complete restoration of the 27 holes, the intention, I guess, is then to make it so that any of the three nines would be a lot of fun, and not, the experience in every way would be pretty enjoyable, is that?
Yeah, and here's how we're going to achieve that. Whatever option that the city chooses to move forward with, there are certain things that we're doing throughout, that are going to help make the golf course more playable and more fun, and less difficult for those who are looking for fun and challenge and playability. There are exceptional golfers, one an exceptional test, and they will get that too. I am, you know, there are architects out there that feel that golf courses can't be all things to all people, I disagree. They can be all things to all people. And that's what we've done, that's what I've done since 1992 in this business. One of the things we're going to do is wider fairways. That's going to help the lot, the majority of golfers, and you have to remember, that only 10% of the golfers in the world break 100. And so there are a lot of people out there that have no prayer at playing at the level of even the best touring professionals. So we have to think about design for that. And one of the ways we do that is wider targets, wider fairways. Sand bunkers are going to be relocated so that they challenge golfers.
For me, use up all of Adana for me, because I'd need really wide.
Well, there you go. You got it. You got it wide, and you're not going to be too far from other holes, so in case you go really wide, you'll be on another golf hole. We also locate our hazards, such as sand bunkers, in ways so that they challenge the golfer and not penalize the golfer. And I won't get into the details of how we do that, but it makes amazing difference between a golf course that has bunkers that are just there to catch bad shots, versus bunkers there that are supposed to challenge golfers to achieve a goal.
And then finally, I know a big part of this area is in a floodplain. Can you create drainage so that when it does get flooded, it drains relatively quickly? Or is that not allowed under the watershed district?
We can do, we can install some internal drainage without affecting the floodplain. Floodplain doesn't, it's obviously naturally wet all the time, but it doesn't mean that we can't drain. A floodplain is a bathtub, so we have to keep that volume of a bathtub in place. So, so that everything that, when the land floods...
But you can concentrate it into ponds and that kind of thing? Is that allowed?
Yeah, well, we'll have them in ponds also, but there are areas of certain elevation, a floodplain elevation, that we have to make, that is considered floodplain. And so they sort of go hand in hand a little bit. I'm just trying to find that, that number. But there are things that we can do to improve drainage. The trick with the floodplain is, we have to keep that volume in place. But that doesn't mean we can't cut in certain areas of the floodplain and fill in certain areas of the floodplain. But that does, but it's not as simple as it sounds. There's certain ways to do that in order to maintain the integrity of the bathtub, so to speak. And so, in other words, there's floodplain in the lower holes, 24 through 27, but then there's also floodplain on the second hole, which is the two north and south extremes. So we can't cut, lower an area on the second hole, and then raise an area equally on the 27th hole, because they are, even though they're part of the same floodplain, they're not related. So what we have to do is be very creative and careful, and regimentally go through, and we have to have cuts and fills that are adjacent to each other. But it's achievable. Will it be completely dry? Not necessarily, but we think it'll be drier than what it is now.
And just to, for my organizational scheme, you gave us six options, but then there's also this renovation plan?
Mm-hmm.
So it's sort of seven options, is it not?
Yeah. It's seven options, and then that one option, the renovation business plan, actually, there's a design, but there's also two or three other options of different projects that you can go through, based on the numbers that range from 2.2 to 7.8 million. So seven different designs, but about 10 different options to choose from.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Member Brendel?
I just have a couple. I think it's important, just to kind of think through what's, what we think is important at Braemar. Individually, as a council, part of that comes from the people we've talked to, part of that comes from some of the promises we made of what we were going to do here, to make sure, as you just mentioned, that the golf course is playable and comfortable for everyone, welcoming for everyone. So in, in thinking about that, one of the things that you mentioned was multiple tee boxes, like six or seven on a hole. So right now, you have the red and the white, and the yellow and the blue, maybe. Talk to me about, they, do these various tee boxes, do they accommodate the shorter play? Do the, what, what is that?
It accommodates shorter play, yes. But expanded a little bit more, is the, here's the idea of tee shot distance equity, okay? All golfers...
Tee shot distance equity?
Tee shot distance equity is a formula that I've sort of developed, something I've been doing since the early '90s.
All right.
And so the concept is that whether it's me, or Phil Mickelson, or Phil Mickelson's grandmother, of all three of us are playing golf, three completely different golfers hitting different length tee shots. If we play from the right set of tees, which is like marketing, bringing people to Braemar, we also have to work, and once we get through all this, make sure that people play the right set of tees where they're supposed to. But if everybody plays from the right set of tees, and everybody hits their average tee shot, then everyone should have the same shot into a green. So we would all hit seven irons, so to speak. So that's how, that's where the equity comes in. And so what that requires is, in order to do that, is some tee boxes, some sets of tees will move up more, and some tees might even move back a little bit, so that everybody sort of gets in line. And so generally speaking, there's a consistent differential between tee boxes, from the back tee to the next tee, to the next tee, to the next tee, to the next tee. And we're looking at probably five, maybe six sets of tees for Braemar, regardless of the, regardless of whatever route we go. There're going to be an equal number of 400 or 500 yards between each tee complex, okay? Right now, I'll just run through it. You know, we have to sort of change things, you know, I'm going to use an 18-hole equivalent, because basically what we try to do with per 18 holes, we try to have a 500-yard difference. And that usually ends up providing the tee shot distance equity that we want. Now, right now, at Braemar, from the back, the blue tee to the white tee, there's only a 268-yard difference. From the white to silver tees, it's 313. Silver to red, it's 389. Red to green, it's 165. You might as well just, what's red and green? Purple? You might as well just make a purple tee, because they're just way too close. And then, green to gold is 442 yards. So you can see that there's a variation of differentials there, that does not provide tee shot distance equity. And as, as I've learned, walking the golf course with young, old, male, female, high handicapper, low handicapper, it's just not equal. And that's a big element of why Braemar's rounds have fallen. So we're going to be able to bring golfers, good or, you know, less skilled or expert skilled, to come and play and have that same experience.
Just one more thing from me, and that is that, I don't know, Jim, was it four years ago? I mean, it was in my first term, that the National Golf Association kind of did an audit of...
National Golf Foundation.
National Golf Foundation? And they, they basically audited the golf course and gave us a document that outlined what we needed to do. And number one was pave the cart paths, for the very reasons that you're talking about. And, you know, we put it off, we knew we'd be doing something with the golf course eventually. So here we are. And so that is, that is very high on the list, for the reasons you outlined. It does get you, I mean, successfully being able to navigate from one place to another and not be in the mud, really is what, in my experience. I'm not a great navigator, so if it's not paved, I have to figure out where the next segment of golf cart path is. So when it's paved, it really is going to benefit us in a variety of ways, not just with soft, soft turf. It's really going to get people from one place to another, and lead them there in a better manner. So those, those are my comments.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, ironically, Richard Singer was the man who provided that report, National Golf Foundation. I know Richard well. I just talked to him last week, and that's how I know. But aside from that, right now, you have cart paths that are pretty much from one green, from green to the next tee, as opposed to wall-to-wall cart path.
Right.
And so we're talking about major work with new cart paths, because we're going to have what we call wall-to-wall, from the first tee, and in this case, to the 27th hole. So number one, that's going to be a change. Number two, right now, the cart paths aren't wide enough. They really need to be eight feet wide for one-way traffic, and 14 feet wide for two-way traffic. And we've calculated how many linear feet of eight-foot and 14-foot cart path we have in these plans already, as part of our budget numbers. Right now, they're six or seven feet wide. And the other issue with your cart paths, as you guys know, is they come in a different, couple of different flavors, asphalt, concrete, and gravel. So to pull all that together, it'll, it'll make a great improvement.
But we can have two-way cart paths?
In some places, where you, where you don't want cart paths, because cars will be coming at from different directions, so we need to give them enough space so they don't crash into each other.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things I forgot to mention when Joe introduced Richard was, a lot of compliment again, the task force, when they interviewed all of the finalists, and unanimously decided to hire Richard, nobody knew at that point in time that he was going to end up being Golf Digest 2014 Public Golf Course Architect of the Year. But that's an award that's since been bestowed on him and his, his group, so we've hired a tremendous architect.
I appreciate, I appreciate that award, I mean, that, but it was actually Keller Golf Course won municipal renovation of the year, of course. Course won Municipal Renovation of the Year, of course, being the designer. That was, that was a nice feather in my cap. While we're on the subject, state of South Carolina had four regional awards for renovation of the year, or not renovation of the last decade in South Carolina. And I won two of the four regions, but I just found that out earlier today, so...
Good. Congratulations.
Perfect segue. Thanks. I'll pay 10 bucks later.
Thanks for the very thorough presentation.
Do you have anything?
All right. No, I don't have anything, because I, I've been attending the task force meetings.
That'll be a subject.
All right. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Exciting.
All right, good. We're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening involving our CDBG, our Community Development, Development Block Grant monies that we get. Joyce Repia has this matter, which she handles so well every year. And Joyce, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here. Mayor Hovland, and members of the council, it's great to be here today to talk to you about our CDBG budget for 2015. CDBG is a federally funded program administered by HUD, who charges Hennepin County to distribute funds to the communities. The money must be directed toward improving housing opportunities and providing a suitable living environment for persons of low and moderate income. Projects funded through CDBG must be directed toward public service or community development. Historically, HUD has asked the cities to use the previous year's approved budgets for planning purposes, and later in the spring, they finalize an approved budget. Edina's 2014 budget, now used for planning purposes, is $126,866. Last year, when planning, we used the 2013 final budget of $124,671. And the finalized budget increased by $2,195. Considering past history, it is likely that when HUD determines the final budget later this spring, we may again experience a slight increase in this planning budget. Addressing the public service requests, HUD requires that the city budget not exceed 15% of the total $126,866, which for 2015 allows for $19,030 to assist the following agencies who have provided services to the community for many years. Senior Community Services Home Program stands for Housing and Outdoor Maintenance for the Elderly. They provide housekeeping and chores services and outside maintenance assistance for Edina seniors 60 and older, who pay for the services on a sliding fee scale. In 2014, home provided services to 47 Edina seniors with 1,704 service hours, reflecting a slight reduction in the people served from 2013, but maintaining a high level of service hours. For many years, the total home budget for Edina has been $26,000, far exceeding the funds currently available from the HUD CDBG program. In an effort to bridge that financial gap, in 2000, the city council asked the Edina Housing Foundation to make up the difference between the availability of the CDBG funds, to ensure that services to Edina seniors continue to be met. And the Housing Foundation has been providing that financial boost ever since. Currently, Senior Community Services is requesting $10,095, which was the 2014 distribution. However, the recommended allotment is $8,955 in order to provide additional funding for HomeLine, with the understanding that the Edina Housing Foundation will again work with Senior Community Services to meet their funding needs. Community Action Partnership for Suburban Hennepin, also known as CAPSH, provides full-cycle homeownership energy assistance, free legal service and tax preparation, employment counseling, and financial budget counseling. In 2014, CAPSH provided assistance to 32 Edina households, and they project in 2015 to expand their reach to 41 households, with the addition of financial literacy and senior financial security workshops in the community. CAPSH is requesting $6,000, an $835 increase from the 2014 distribution. However, we are recommending to stay with the $5,165 distribution from 2014, with the understanding that once the CDBG budget is finalized, if an increase in funding is available, CAPSH could receive additional funds. HomeLine provides tenant advocacy services for Edina renters facing critical situations that threaten their housing security. In 2014, HomeLine's tenant hotline received calls from 125 Edina renter households, demonstrating a 13% increase from 2013. Recently, HomeLine added Somali and Spanish-speaking tenant advocates to their staff, and has embarked on an initiative to make sure these immigrant communities are aware of the services available. HomeLine has identified that in order to meet the demand in Edina, they are requesting $4,910, a $1,140 increase from the $3,770 distribution in 2014. And it is recommended that their request be met. After the $19,030 distribution for public services, $107,836 remains to be directed toward community development projects. In years past, the community development funds have been distributed to the Rehabilitation of Private Property Program and the West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, or WALT. The Rehabilitation of Private Property Program provides deferred repayment loans of up to $30,000 to make structural improvements to owner-occupied homes. Eligibility for the program is based on a household income schedule established by HUD for the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. Hennepin County facilitates this program and reports that currently, Edina has $180,000 available in the program from previous year's funding, with no waiting lists. In an effort to raise awareness of the housing rehab program, we are working with the Communications Department to advertise the program in the city's publications. However, due to the large pool of funds currently available, it is recommended that the Rehabilitation of Private Property Program not be funded in the 2015 budget cycle. It is recommended that all of the $107,836 community development dollars be distributed to West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust for their Homes Within Reach program, which provides affordable homeownership opportunities using the Community Land Trust model for income-eligible home buyers. The Community Land Trust model removes the market value of the land from the mortgage equation, thus reducing the cost of the home for a workforce family by approximately 30 to 50%, making it more affordable than a home on the open real estate market. WALT owns the land, and the homeowner owns the home. A ground lease signed by both parties defines and secures the roles and responsibilities of both WALT and the homeowner, including, but not limited to, the resale and recapture provision, and the long-term rights and use of the land. One of the strategies identified in the housing element of Edina's comprehensive plan calls for the city's commitment to fund and expand its financial and technical support of community land trusts. Attesting to this goal, since 2007, the city has provided $804,253 in CDBG assistance to WALT, assisting in the purchase, rehabilitation, and resale of nine Edina homes to income-eligible buyers. The last Edina home purchased by WALT was completed in January 2014, required combining the 2013 and 2013 CDB budget totals, totaling $108,222, due to the high cost of housing in the community. WALT's share of the 2014 budget, which was $56,903, has yet to be spent. Moving forward, the proposed $107,836, when added to the $56,903 from 2014, will provide a total of $164,739 toward assisting WALT to purchase two land trust homes, reinforcing the city's commitment to providing and securing affordable housing in the community. To recap the budget, a breakdown for 2015 is recommended for, with Senior Community Services Home Program receiving $8,955, Community Action Partnership for Suburban Hennepin receiving $5,165, and HomeLine receiving $4,910, completing the public service funding allotment of $19,030. The remaining $107,836 available for community development is recommended to be, to go toward West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. Representatives from the agencies requesting funding are here today to answer any questions you may have, and I too would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Repia. Very thorough report. Any questions for Joyce Repia at this point, Pat? Senator President.
Just, Joyce and I had a nice conversation on the telephone today. And this is, this is very thorough. I do serve on the, on the board of Community Action Partnership for Southern Hennepin, and of course, would advocate for, for funding to their level of request. And so I am hoping that the, the final budget will include sufficient funds to, to fund that out. I think it's a difference of about $835, if my math is right. So hopefully, that difference is there and can be there. Just, just a side note on that, CAPSH is, and, and she is here, Christina is here, and she can add to this, but extremely busy these days, handling not just Southern Hennepin, but also Minneapolis requests. And additionally, our boardroom has been taken over as classrooms. So, we now meet at a different place every month. So, we get to see what else is out there, but that is just a demonstration of what's going on, how many of the outreach classes are taking place that utilize these dollars. One question for you that occurred to me while we were, while we were listening, and that is the, in WALT, Homes Within Reach, why wasn't the allotment for 2014 spent?
Finding homes in Edina is, it's, it's an art, because we want to make sure that these houses are scattered throughout the community, and they aren't located in one, one particular neighborhood. So, Janet Linbo, who I think is here this evening, works very hard at finding the homes in the neighborhoods. And, and they're particular about the homes because they do renovate them, they do rehab them, but they need to keep within their budget, too. They do receive funding, other than our CDBG funding, they receive home funds from HUD and the AHIF funding. So they have many different funding sources that they put together to create, to help facilitate the purchase of these homes in Edina. And they used, in 2014, they did purchase a home, but they need, they used the 2012 and the 2013 funds together in order to facilitate that purchase.
And this was remaining?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Ms. Repia? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open this matter up to public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this proposed recommendation from staff? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Deb Taylor. I'm the CEO of Senior Community Services. And this is John Burkow. He's the director of our home program. And we are located on 10201 Wayzata Boulevard in Minnetaka. Imagine, you're 85 years old, you're sitting in your living room, you're looking out the window, and it's snowing. And it's accumulating, and it's accumulating, and it's accumulating. Now, the scenario can go two different ways. One, you're stuck in your home. You can't leave. Your Meals on Wheels volunteer can't get to the door, just because they're at risk in trying to navigate that snow-filled driveway. Scenario number two, the snow stops falling, you're looking out your window, and a Senior Community Services worker is out there shoveling your driveway, shoveling your steps, and shoveling your sidewalks. Not only can you come and go now, but your neighbors are also happy because you've shoveled the sidewalks as well. But truly, if they'd been good neighbors in the first place, perhaps, they may have helped with shoveling, too. Apparently, word has gotten out about our snow removal services for seniors. John received a call from the city of Boston, asking us how they might implement a snow removal system for seniors in their city. And so, John provided them with some insights on how they might do that. Senior Community Services' vision is to mobilize the community to reimagine aging. And last year, we mobilized over 3,000 volunteers to provide spring and fall yard cleanup. We also provided interior and exterior painting. And one of our favorite clients was cited by a city because her dilapidated fence needed to be painted. Well, she called us up, and her name is Ruby, and boy, was Ruby mad. She's like, "I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm on social security, I'm on a fixed income, and I've got to paint this fence." And Ruby uses a walker to get around, so certainly she wasn't going to be able to do that. So, we got volunteers to do the painting, and we got a donation to provide the paint. And so, it was city-approved, and it was Ruby-approved. And so, everybody was happy with the new painted fence in, in the neighborhood. Because of the CDBG funding, we are able to provide services like this to residents of Edina, age 60 and older. And I thank you for providing that funding. Senior Community Services thanks you, and Ruby thanks you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Taylor?
All right.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name's Janet Linbo, and I'm the executive director of West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust.
Good to see you again this year.
Thank you. And it's nice to be here, and thank you for the partnership. Great questions, and I, I think I can respond to some of those questions. You know, I think I need to recruit Joyce. She knows more about my program than I think I do sometimes. So she did a fabulous job. As she said, we've been, we've been partnering with the cities in, since 2007. We've acquired, rehab, and sold nine homes. Those homes, on average, if you look at the purchase price, was about $245,000. And if you look at the average land value of that purchase price, it was $145,000. So it just shows you that the high land value really stops the affordability for workforce families, who provide essential services to the community. With regards to some of the information that Joyce shared with you, we have until June 30th to expend the 2014 CDBG, and we will. As well as, we time it, I think you've just identified, one of the biggest challenges, we had lots of applicants, lots of interest, not only in Edina, but all through the communities we serve. Inventory was really very, very difficult with detached entry-level homes, to buy good ones. And we bought several foreclosures as well, one in Edina. But that was our biggest challenge the last probably 12 months. We time everything with funding, lines of credit, and so on. So, we don't always buy them the first 12 months of the 18 months of the CDBG. The kind of profile that we're providing, I want to provide you is, our, our homeowners are typically earning incomes of about $46,000, three to four people in the family. Sale price is around $139,000, $140,000, when they're buying just the home. We're doing a lot of extensive rehab, more so than we did five, six, seven years ago. Our average in Edina is about $45,000. Our average in Edina is about $45,000, and that includes a variety of things, energy-efficient HVAC systems, hot water heaters, insulation, all the things that green communities in Hennepin County monitor us to upgrade and implement. With regards, the last piece I wanted to supplement what Joyce said is that Homes Within Reach brings a match to your CDBG dollars. With the nine homes that we have executed as partners, all of us, that was $747,000, at $350, and that was the CDBG portion of it, and the matching funds that we raised at Hennepin County, Med Council, Minnesota Housing, Impact Funds, as well as bond proceeds, we matched it with $804,000. So you can see, it's about a 50/50 there, that we really need to work together as a partnership to be able to continue providing affordable homeownership.
Ms. Linbo, I need to have you wrap up.
I really want you to go on our website and go look at our video. Our video was made last year, and it features four families, one's an Edina family, and it's a very special message from that family.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just, not a question, but a comment, I just, I do want to pause for a moment, Ms. Linbo, and recognize the creativity of this. You know, we have a lot of discussions in our community about affordable housing and how we can do better in affordable housing, and I think the model that you're using is a really, a great demonstration of how we can be creative about making the price of a home more affordable by, you know, splitting this land price and the house price apart, and I think it's worth noting, and part of the reason I just wanted to stop at the end of your presentation, was to remind folks that we have a lot of different creative ways to address the needs that we think are important, and I think this is one of them, and we ought to continue to highlight this. I know Joyce and our Housing Foundation are doing a lot of good work on this kind of thing, and I just want to highlight that, you know, from the dais here as we're hearing about it from the City Council.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your work.
Member Stewart?
I just have a quick question about the mechanics of how this works. From Joyce's presentation, well, from your presentation, the median price of the land under the house is about $145,000. Joyce said that the combined leftover money from last year and this year's would give you about $165,000, and then she said that was going to be used for two houses, so I'm having a math problem. Are you able to leverage that?
We'll bring matching dollars, probably more so than that, to do it, to do the rehab as well as to purchase the home.
So it's all the matching dollars, there's no mortgage that you take or anything like that?
Well, the homeowners will do, they mortgage, they get a home for the home, that's right, and the funding pays for the land value, a little bit of soft costs, and a portion of the rehab.
But WALT doesn't leverage its portion?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Linbo.
Yep. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Christine Hart, I'm with Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin as a community developer there, and I want to thank you for letting me be here today and for supporting our longstanding partnership with the city of Edina. And Joyce did an awesome job introducing, took many of my talking points, so I'll keep it brief, but CAPS was founded in 1985 as a community action agency serving communities in suburban Hennepin County, and many of our programs include homeless and supportive services, energy assistance, tax filing assistance, immigration services, the list goes on and on, but the one I want to talk about today is our homeownership and financial stability service, program services. And in program year 2013, 2014, CAPS assisted 19,206 low-income households, and that impacted 38,976 individuals through all of these programs. CAPS is the only HUD-approved counseling agency providing free services in all of suburban Hennepin County, and in this past year, we served over 50 Edina households for the programs that we're seeking funding for today. So for the homeownership and financial stability program services, these include a variety of services, the first being foreclosure prevention, so counselors working directly with residents who are facing foreclosure and helping them to improve their financial status. The good news about this is that foreclosure rates in the county are decreasing, and as a result of it, even better news is that we are seeing increased participation in our homeownership and financial literacy workshops. So it's showing us a trend that people are looking to buy again, which is a great thing. And going on that, our home buyer education, our workshops on how to prepare for buying a home and making informed purchases, and this is a really popular service right now because many lenders are requiring a successful completion before providing a loan. And then, in addition to the workshops, we also offer home-buying counseling, and that's working one-on-one with a client to make them financially mortgage-ready, and there's a 20% increase in participation across the state of Minnesota for this service right now. A couple of the other services we offer quickly are reverse mortgage counseling, so personal counseling for eligible seniors who are house-rich but cash-poor, helping them to stay in their homes. We offer home repair and maintenance, and the majority of our clients for these basic repairs are seniors or disabled. And then, financial literacy, so financial literacy, offering workshops to teach clients to budget to create savings, reducing debt, building assets, and building good credit rating. Our new program, under the financial literacy umbrella, is financial security for seniors, and that's providing information on budgeting, but also information on avoiding scams and identity theft, and then accessing benefits and resources. So we really find that these services are so important because a successful homeownership leads to financial stability, and that really contributes to the vibrancy of our community here as a whole. So we look forward to continuing our services to residents of Edina through our programs, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Any questions for Ms. Hart, comments? Member Brindle?
Christine, would you tell everyone how homeowners find out about CAPS?
Yeah, so we have a variety of ways. One of the biggest things that we've been doing the last few years is just increasing our web presence, we've been having a few marketing campaigns as well, but we are also located, our services are located on a variety of different website pages, and I'm blanking on the names right now, where people for foreclosure would come to for information. So outside of just community action websites, we're located on those.
And when people get a mortgage now, they get a sheet of resources if they have, if they run into hard times, CAPS is listed on that sheet of paper, that they, as a resource that they can call to get assistance and advice. So that's another way, everybody who buys a house walks out with a piece of paper that is their mortgage, and part of that is some of the safety net information.
And all our homeowner counselors are cross-trained for all the services at CAPS, so that's where we do a good job of making sure if someone's coming for foreclosure, that they're being able to get connected to other services that could help them with their situation as well.
Thanks, Ms. Hart.
Yeah, any other questions?
Anyone else who wishes to testify? No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Beth Codleboy, I'm the Executive Director of Home Line. You all look very familiar, so I'm...
Yes, you look familiar as well.
And Joyce, you did a great job of covering some of the main points I want to hit on, so I'm not going to take a lot of your time. Home Line's main program that we're asking Edina to support is our tenant hotline services that helps low-income people work through the problems they're having in their rental situation and figure out the best strategy for solving them. As Joyce said, we had a huge increase last year, 13% increase, it wasn't our record year, but it was really close to the most calls we ever got in Edina, and that's a reflection of the really tight rental market and the problems with wage decreases that we see in the low-income families, trying to make ends meet, and really, those two things hitting the road. One of the things Joyce brought up was, we have hired Somali and Spanish tenant advocates to our tenant hotline, and that really has resulted from the poor rental practices we really see that affect immigrant groups. So we're really hoping to expand that this year and work with the city if they're identifying any buildings where immigrant groups are located, because we want to work with those populations, so they understand, one, that they have their rights, and how to go ahead and take those steps to properly take care of those issues that they're facing. So as I said, I'm not going to take a lot of your time, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions for Beth? All right, good, thank you. Thanks, Beth. For all of you, thanks for the good work you're doing. Anyone else wish to testify? All right, seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion with regard to the recommendation of our senior planner with respect to embodied in Resolution 2015-20?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the recommended 2015 CDBG budget for submission to Hennepin County, embodied in Resolution 2015-20. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you, everybody, good to get that extra input. All right, that's the only public hearing we had this evening, and now we're in the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council with regard to a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first matter there is the second reading of the tree ordinance. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As directed by the council at your last meeting, staff has prepared the ordinance amendment regarding tree preservation and subdivisions. The new language is highlighted in blue, and it has to do with the transplanted tree and giving someone credit for a tree that's transplanted elsewhere on the property. That's the only change that was recommended, so with that, staff would recommend second reading.
Good. Discussion? Otherwise, is there a motion?
We got a letter today from one of the residential builders who suggested, do you have something, or are you going to follow them?
I'll follow you.
Okay, but he suggested that we might be rushing on this, and that the CFR stands for, help me, the radius that needs to be protected is larger than needed, so I guess I thought I would just ask that in, to make sure we can address that before we take action.
I didn't receive that email today, but...
It's from Scott Bison.
He did chime in with that, with that...
Critical root zone.
Concern early on.
Critical root zone, thank you.
Yeah, he did ask about that early on, and as a result of his concerns, we built in some flexibility.
Okay.
It's on page two, under C, critical root zone. There was some concern initially that in protecting that critical root zone, you would render a site unbuildable if a tree was out toward the front, where you just couldn't put anything or even drive underneath that tree. So we built in some wiggle room there to work with the city forester to come up with a plan to do as best you can in protecting that tree.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Manager Neil?
My request to the council is that you consider whether you adopt this tonight or not, and you may, but if you do, if you would consider a delay in the implementation of the ordinance for two reasons. One, we still have not fully flushed out how we're going to staff the new responsibilities. There's an infinite number of ways we could do it, we just haven't, until the ordinance is completed, haven't had a chance to finally decide how to do that, so we do need some time to do that. We also think it would be good to take some additional time to prepare the building, development, engineering, community who are going to be doing this kind of work around trees, to prepare them for the changes, how we're going to enforce them, what we're going to be expecting from them. We think that would allow us greater levels of compliance, which is really what we're looking for in the end. So if we, if you would be willing to do that, we think that a July 1st deadline would work fine for both of those purposes.
Manager Neil, is your recommendation that we table this until July 1st, or that we pass it to be effective on July 1st?
It would be, Councilmember Stewart and members of council would be the latter of those two. I think, you know, your adoption of this gives some finality to the city council's consideration, which allows us to understand what the ordinance is going to be and what it's not going to be, and allows us also some time to educate our development-building community on what they're going to need to do to be in compliance.
All right. Member Stewart, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll move to adopt the resolution to be effective on the 1st of July, 2015.
All right, so it would be the approval of the second reading of the ordinance, number 2015-25, to be effective July 1st, 2015. Is that correct?
That works for you.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second, but I have some discussion on the end.
Sure, go ahead.
Manager Neil, let's say that we don't extend that, what happens if we don't give you this extra time? I mean, it would become effective, people would be bound to follow it. Is there, you know, we may not have the personnel to be out there assigned, but, you know, I, well, so can you give me some sense of that?
Sure. I think what happens is, we probably don't have enough, because the actual, the effective date is fairly quick, if it's just, if you adopt it as it is. We don't have enough time in that sense to fully educate the people that are going to be working around trees as to what they're going to, how they're going to have to behave and how they're going to have to interact with us regarding the new ordinance. We'd certainly have enough time to make copies of this or email it to people from the various lists we have, but we'd like to do a little bit more than that. We'd like to be able to sit down with them in groups and try to gain as much compliance from them with the new ordinance that's coming, because there are some, there are some significant changes that are going to cause them to change the way they do business, not only on the site but with the city as well. What it means for us, from a staffing standpoint, is that our forestry group that we have right now is really one, one part-time guy, and we think that we need to sort out with the new duties, how much of them have to be done by a certified forester with the right skillset and experience set, and there's other duties within this new ordinance that can be done by people with lesser qualifications. You know, going out and measuring the, how much the fence has to be from the side of the tree is something that probably any one of us could do, that doesn't take a certified forester to do. So we think by sorting out, by having some additional time to sort out what we can do with this existing staff versus what we're going to have to hire specialized staff to do, we can, we can staff this in a better, probably less expensive way.
Thank you for that.
All right. Any other?
Well, just, I have to say, I'm a little torn on this because we've been working on this quite a long time, and I know from my time on the planning commission, I think we go back at least a year, if not longer, on the work on this, and I know there's been a lot of discussion on it, but I understand the points that Manager Neil makes, and I'm interested in it being successful. To back up for a second, you know, I received Mr. Bucen's comments, and I want to say that I appreciate the pressures that are on builders and the people who are going to buy homes from them, and, you know, I'm sensitive to the costs, but I also think it is not accurate to say that we're rushing into this, we've been at this for quite some time, we've taken a lot of input on it. And I also think, in the grand scheme of things, it's a relatively modest approach. We're not tackling every lot in the city, we're just talking about those situations where we have building going on on a site, and what we're trying to do is create a little bit of an incentive to be thinking before you clear-cut the lot to get the house on there. And certainly, the trees that are on the building pad aren't part of what's affected by this, it's really the trees that are around it, and we're trying to create some incentives to save those. So I'm very supportive of the ordinance, and I want to move it forward. I will defer to the manager's expertise on the need to ramp up on this, and just hope that we don't lose any trees between now and July 1st as we do that, and hope that the education process will... education process will help people think about this even before the law goes into effect. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, your little thoughts. Any further comments?
Quick question for Manager Neil.
Sure.
What is the risk that June becomes chainsaw month on sites to be developed in Edina?
There are other protections and management techniques that we can use to encourage that not to happen, but certainly there are ways that if people have a wish not to comply with the spirit of this ordinance or even the new ordinance, there are probably ways that they could remove their trees prior to bringing an action to the council, to the city.
Any further comment? All those in favor, strike that. We need a roll call here. Roll call, please, Ms. Megan.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Member Stewart.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
All right, next matter in front of us is resolution 2015 dash 21, which is a lot division with variances. Director Teague has this matter. It has been to the planning commission, recommended unanimously for approval by them, and also has a staff endorsement, so, manager, or Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, sorry about that. This property is located at the intersection of 54th and Drew, the southeast corner. The site is currently zoned R2, two-family residential. It contains a duplex. You see the duplex on the screen here, and it does have a detached garage. The applicant is proposing to tear that duplex down and build another duplex in its place. So this is a rendering from Drew, what the new structure would look like. Another view from 54th, and again, this is Drew and 54th. So this request requires a very small side-street setback variance from 20 feet to 18 feet, lot area variance from 15,000 to just under 11,000 square feet, lot width variance from 90 to 80 feet, those are existing conditions, and they're also requesting a party wall lot division, so they can sell each unit individually. So to highlight the area that's requested for a variance, it's this two-foot yellow strip. This is considered a side-street setback. Our ordinance requires a 15-foot setback for a portion of a home that doesn't have the garage facing the street. If your garage faces the street, the setback becomes 20 feet. So that's the requirement here for the garage, and the reason they're doing that is to make the home look more like a single-family home from each street view, so from 54th and from Drew. If they were to turn this garage and face 54th, all setbacks would be met. A 15-foot setback would be required to Drew. So it could be code compliant, but they'd like to make that design change and also not have a solid wall facing Drew. So just quickly look at the site plan, there's an existing maple tree that would be removed. The applicant is proposing to replace two trees, one on each lot, here and this location, and the two larger trees on the property would remain. There's a row of shrubs in this location here, they would, they're proposing to trim those shrubs and then remove this opening for the driveway entrance. So with that, staff and the planning commission believe that this request is reasonable, and we're both in support and recommending approval here. We believe that the variance criteria have been met, the lot width and area, again, are existing conditions. The small R2 lots, not uncommon for a lot of our R2 properties, you recall, well, one of the properties we're going to look at a little later this evening, on 49th, where all of those lots are substandard. Most of our R2 lots do fall below the 15,000 square foot minimum lot size. It's just replacing an existing double with a new double. Practical difficulty here is based on the existing small size of the lot. In regard to drainage, engineering department has reviewed the drainage plan, believes it's an improvement over the existing conditions today, and again, the applicant is proposing to have the home look more like a single-family home from each side of the street. This is predominantly a single-family residential neighborhood. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report and the resolution. With that, I can stand for questions.
Nice presentation. Any questions for Director Teague at this point in time?
Just a comment.
Member Brindle?
Just a comment, thank you. This is very creative way to address this corner. They're lucky it's a corner, and I think they've made good use of the fact that it is a corner, because the way the house does address both streets is it does look like it's a single gable. So nicely done, actually not a surprise, knowing who the builder is, they do beautiful things, so thank you.
I would agree.
Member Staunton?
I guess I would just chime in to say that what caught my ear was that most of our R2 lots are below, are non-conforming, are below what our code requires, and to me, my reaction is maybe we should think about changing our code to make it align so that we don't have these variances, so, just a thought to pass along to the planning commission.
Or another thought, we have to go through a variance for a tear-down rebuild on a R2 lot, we don't on an R1. Most of our R1 properties are also substandard, but our code says if you tear down and rebuild in an R2 lot, we need to come in with the variances. So maybe we want to sync those two up.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to take to the planning commission. Thank you, Member Staunton. All right, other questions for Director Teague? Anyone have a care to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I will move 2015 dash 21.
Second.
All right, we got a motion of second to adopt 2000, resolution 2015 dash 21, which is a lot division with variances at 3621 and 3625 54th Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. And next, we have a request for consideration of changes to plans for rezoning requests, which originally denied by the city council for Matthias Mortensen property at 3923 49th Street, and Director Teague has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a unique request, at least in all of my time in Edina, I don't believe we've had a request such as this. So as the council may recall, we had a request for a rezoning from R2, the current, or, excuse me, R1, a single-family residential designation to R2 that was denied by the city council this past July. This property is located just north of the 50th and France area on 49th. There's an existing single-family home on the property, as shown on the screen last winter. The applicant was proposing to tear down that single-family home, rezone to R2. The majority of the properties along 49th are zoned R2, so the R1 is unique here. The request required a number of variances in addition to the rezoning. Again, the lot area variance, as we talked about with the last project, in terms of area and width, would be substandard. There was also a building coverage variance requested from 25% to 32%. That's a variance that's been extremely difficult, if not impossible, to obtain. Planning commission has really held firm to our building coverage requirement, and they've not varied from that. There was also a side yard setback variance, not quite as problematic, that's the side that faced the apartments to the east. So again, this was the request that was denied. Part of the issue, I believe, that the council had was that lot coverage variance, and also the retaining wall that was located extremely close to the lot line to the west. They were proposing the garage to come in off 49th, and it had quite a large retaining wall here that was in close proximity to that lot line. So a combination of those two things, I think, led to the denial. So our city code requires that an application can't be made for the same request, a year has to lapse before that same request can be made, unless, on a three-fifths vote of the city council, if the applicant has submitted some changes that you deem reasonable enough to move forward and make another application for that same rezoning request. So that's what the applicant is requesting here. He's presenting some changes here that I'll show in a minute, and the council is asked to consider them enough to allow them to make an application for a rezoning. It doesn't bind you to a decision that you would approve that, it just allows them to simply make another application. So this is a look at the building that he's proposing. He has shifted that driveway entrance more to the front and away from that lot line, and he's also narrowed up the building itself. Let's see, again, that's the previous. So the building has become more narrow, shifted a little bit away from the lot line to the west and to the east. There still would be a variance required for this setback, but again, this is the large parking lot for the apartment building to the east. So this is the driveway as it comes in. And probably most significantly from staff perspective is the applicant is stating that he would meet that lot coverage requirement. There's some inconsistencies in the plan, he's really close to the 25%. There's a green roof that's shown in this location here that would actually would be covered, or would be considered hard coverage, but the numbers are really close, and he has stated that the intent is to come in and not ask for a variance to the lot coverage requirement. So with that, staff would support allowing the applicant to come back with these changes. I can stand for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Questions for Director Teague on this matter? Member Brindle, or comment?
I do. Couple things. So, this could be a question for you, it could be a question for the applicant. Is the interior space the same as the previous proposal?
I didn't receive a floor plan with this one, so that might be a question. Generally the same, it's become...
Yeah, I have the old floor plan, so I'll be curious if that has changed as well as the exterior. And then, looking at the information we received, there is rear elevation, and there. Okay, so the top one, I see two hip roofs, one over each of the units, and, or each of the sides, and then I see a flat roof with skylights. And on the bottom, rear elevation still, I see a hip roof over what above looks to me like a flat roof. So I'd like some clarification that that is indeed a hip roof back there, or what that is.
Yeah, I'll let the applicant respond to that, but I believe this element that you're seeing here, and not seeing in this picture, whoops, going the wrong way, is this element up here.
Right, and so it just was an inconsistency for me, I just want some clarification.
Mr. Mortensen, would you come forward and offer a comment on that concern of Member Brindle's?
Yes, right. So...
Would you identify yourself, please, and give us your address?
I'm Matthias Mortensen. Matthias Mortensen, I'm the architect and project representative. As far as the interior layout goes, it is the same for all practical purposes. Our two goals for the project have always been, number one, to create a double-dwelling unit that would allow people to age in place, so we're still committed to single-floor living. And so that, the layout of the first floor plan still has all the necessities that would allow somebody to do so. There have been some modifications, because in order to shrink within the acceptable footprint, we had to reshuffle things, but by and large, it's the same. So everything's accessible, and all the amenities and necessities are on the first floor.
Can we go to that rear elevation again?
Yeah.
There's one other aspect of it that I would like to, there.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the upper drawing, the second floor can leave us out slightly over the first floor?
Yeah.
And that, and it's not shown that way in the bottom, in that bottom picture, so I just want to clarify that you're coming out, what is it, a foot and a half, something like that?
Not even.
Not even?
Yeah.
Little over a foot?
Yeah. It's mostly to create some articulation...
Sure.
...along the rear and the side, and there's a material, there'll be a material difference there of some sort. So it's not, it's not to, you know, find more space for the building, it's really about the visual look from the rear.
Okay, great.
Did I answer all your questions? I don't know if you...
Those were my questions.
Okay, great.
Other questions for either Director Teague or Mr. Mortensen? All right, your attorney, Mr. Mortensen, Mr. Gandred, represents in a letter that you got a better design elimination of the lot coverage variance and resolution of drainage issues that are all favorable to allow us to proceed with the project and allow you to refile within the one-year period, instead of outside the one-year period.
Right.
Is that true with respect to lot coverage? It seems like it's close, according to Director Teague.
Yes, so I, my calculations had me at the 25% mark. That was my, that was my goal with the redesign, but we, myself and Carrie, were coming up with slightly different calculations. So I think if you approve reconsideration, it behooves me to sit down with Carrie and to just, in detail, walk through it and make sure that we were on the same page. But in terms of the changes, my, what I came out of the July meeting with was that there were two major concerns. One was grading and drainage, and the other was size. So the, as far as grading and drainage goes, we, our goal, consistent with our goal of making this as sustainable as possible, is to capture as much of the stormwater as possible. And right now, my civil engineer thinks we can get 90% or more of stormwater runoff captured on the site. And that, so if we are approved, my engineer is going to go ahead with a full and complete engineering plan that'll be submitted along with the reaplication, as I see, as I think this process, the next step in this process will be.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion regarding this matter?
I will move item, request for consideration, item 8C.
The action requested is to allow the applicant to file a new rezoning application within one year of the time of denial of the original request. Is that your motion?
It is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay? Abstention?
No, he voted.
Did he vote?
Yep.
Okay.
He did.
All right, motion approved. Thank you. Do you want to run in grab? All right, the next matter before us is, we've got a variety of recommended appointments to the various boards and commissions. We spent probably in excess of a dozen hours interviewing 53 applicants for 23 positions, if my memory serves me correct. It was a great experience, wonderful people in our community that are so willing to serve our town. It's hard to make these choices. We tried to select people that would be serving and also provide some backups in case things happen, life goes on and things occur in people's living circumstances that sometimes cause them to have to leave a border commission. But we did come up with a slate, it's embodied in item 8D, and I'll read the proposed appointments, the border commission that they would be appointed to, the term, ending date, and the name of the person that the entire council is recommending. For arts and culture, there are two openings, first term ends March 1, 2018, Cheryl Gunness... Cheryl Gunness would be the nominee. Arts and culture, term ending 3/117, Daniel Lee is that nominee. Board on Appeal and Equalization, one spot, 3/116 is the expiration date, Roger McVede. Community Health Commission, Britta Orr with a term expiring on March 1st, 2018. Construction Board of Appeals, Jennifer Carlson, term expiring, excuse me, March 1st, 2018. Energy and Environment, first of three recommended appointments, Melissa Sealy with a term ending March 1st, 2018. Lauren Satterly, same term, and then Richard Manser, same ending date on that term of 3/118. Those are all for the Energy and Environment Commission. Two for the Heritage Preservation Board, Karen Kelly with a term ending March 1st, 2016, and Colleen Pearson with a term ending March 1st, 2018. Human Rights and Relations, Tony Tian with a term ending 3/118. Tony was a translator, incidentally, at the Chinese-American New Year's Celebration on Sunday over at Valley View, what a great event. Human Rights and Relations appointments as well, Jasna Burzna, term ending 3/116. Margaret Vecchio Smith, term ending 3/117, that completes Human Rights and Relations. Two on the park board, Greg Good, term ending 3/117, and Julie Struther for the park board as well with the same end date on the term of 3/117. Planning Commission, three recommended appointments, all with the same term ending date of March 1st, 2018. Todd Thorson, Ian Nemiroff, and Jerry Strauss. Transportation Commission, one appointee, Ralph Leferholz, term ending March 1st, 2018. Two reappointments, the Board of Appeal and Equalization with a term ending March 1st, 2016, Michael Friedberg. Heritage Preservation Board, Michael Birdman, term ending 3/116. The following people were selected as alternates in the case of an unscheduled vacancy. The alternates are as follows. Arts and Culture, Kathy Friddell. Board of Appeal and Equalization, Terry Corrup. Community Health Commission, Steve Sarles. Construction Board of Appeals, no backup there. Energy and Environment, Dave Woodley. Heritage Preservation Board, Jay Helverson. Human Rights and Relations, Sarah Rinn. Park Board, Corin Nelson. Planning Commission, Jimmy Bennett, and then Tom O'Connell as a secondary backup. Transportation Commission, Chad Bell. Is there a motion to approve that slate of appointments to the advisory boards and commissions for the council?
So moved.
Second? Got a motion and a second on those folks. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie?
I will just follow that up with a comment, and that is, on the planning commission, we have a number of members going off with the same term date, term limit date, and we're putting three on with the same term date. So what we'll end up with is another time where we're going to lose three all at once. And on a commission like the planning commission, the intellectual information that doesn't come back to that commission is enormous. And so I guess I would like to have us think about whether, I know we have three seats, but whether we should have them all with the same term limit.
Isn't that a nine-member commission with three-year rolling terms?
It is.
It is a nine-member.
Member Brindle, council, it is a nine-member commission, and there are staggered seats, so you only have a third and a third and a third.
Right, and, but they will term limit out a year from each other. So we'll have the same thing happen. Over a couple of years, you're going to have an entirely new planning commission again. I guess that's my point.
They term limit out in nine years, and there's no assurance that any one of these people will last all nine years, so...
Look at the planning commission we've got. They have lasted. And the intellectual knowledge and experience that has left the planning commission in the last two years is huge. So I just, it's an observation that Mike Platerter and I had coffee the other morning, and it was just something we talked about, it was a perspective that I thought, you know, I'll just bring that out, and we can kind of consider, kind of look at the planning commission as one that we rely on, in some cases more heavily than others, for very important decisions with regard to residential and commercial development. And so it's just something that I would like to have us look at and make sure that the commission stays as strong as it can over time.
I think, I think Member Brindle raises an interesting point. For better, you know, whether by happenstance or design, we will have lost six of the nine members of the planning commission since last February.
Right.
And that's a big turnover, there's a lot of institutional memory that's important. And I think when we implemented the term limits, which I think have been a good choice, we recognized we need turnover. It just may be worth thinking about how to make that turnover as gradual and as smooth as possible. And, you know, I don't know that we're certainly not going to solve that tonight, but I think it's an issue worth raising and maybe considering as we go through the next year between now and when we appoint again in the future.
Thanks for those observations.
Can I just piggyback on one other observation? This was my first time, I've sat in on the interviews as a chair of the commission in the past, but this is my first time being one of the people who was making the selections. And I have to say, it's a humbling experience. We are really fortunate in this community to have so many talented people who are generous with their time. And I, you know, I found myself taking notes during this whole thing, thinking I was going to come up with the really obvious solution about who I ought to be, who I ought to be supporting, and who, and I gave up after a while because everybody was so good. And I only feel bad that we weren't able to appoint everybody who volunteered, and I want to thank all of those people who took the time and energy to offer to serve and hope that we can find other avenues for that service and take advantage of that enormous talent.
Good, well said. Thank you.
You know, I'll follow up on that because it used to be that the mayor took the list of applicants and contacted the chair of a commission, which I was for a while, and just kind of talked through, okay, got this person, got this person, need these kinds of skills, and just kind of did the appointment process that way from what a commission needed. I actually wouldn't miss these interviews because you really, it's really fun. It is really fun to just visit with them for 10 minutes, find out who they are, what they want to do, and we actually have fun ourselves during that, giving each other some ribbing, but I wouldn't miss it. It really is, it's wonderful to find out who's out there.
Good, thank you. All right, we've got our environmental engineer here to tell us a little bit about the bids that came in on the fourth phase of the promenade. Ross Bittner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon me, I, my presentation.
It's all.
It's all?
Yep.
I was last in front of you at your January 6th workshop meeting with 90 percent plans for the promenade phase four. This is the time where we bring back the bids and show you how much, show you the final plans and how much the bid came in for. At the meeting, we listened to your input and we realized the importance of the appearance of that rock and channel, so, and the whole promenade itself. So I'll go quickly through the 100 percent plans that were out to bid and then describe our recommendation. Working from north to south, the promenade, the first thing in the north is the North Plaza. This is where the water from this water feature emanates. We worked closely with the arts stakeholders in designing a place that was, had art integrated into the design, something that they called placemaking. They really made that center, that rock circular seating area, a place for gathering. To the south, there's the overlook and the pond feature, where the water cascades down into the pond and then heads further south on its way. As you can see on this photo, we took design advice, making sure that we didn't have any of those squeaking benches that were called out as a problem. Now it's just arbors with benches along the path. They occur further south as well with the...
By squeaking benches, you mean the swings?
Yeah, the swings.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, sorry. And this is the terminus of the water feature, and then the habitat planting area that we showed you on that meeting, and the sixth. We'll take a look at the costs as a game, oh, the last element, the pond feature. This was really valuable to get your opinion on, and we realized that we needed to bid it in multiple different, with multiple different alternates, because we want the look of this channel and stream bed and the rock work to look really natural. So we bid it with alternates of both form line painted in stained concrete and increasing levels of natural rock. And that's in our alternates. The total construction phase costs came in about 10 percent above the bid. We also received some grant funding from Hennepin County Environmental Response Fund, but to a slightly lesser amount than we had anticipated. A good thing nonetheless. So the construction phase costs split out to $1.268 million. There's also some additional professional services for the construction period and the specialty professional services for the contaminated soils and the habitat planting area. We also show a funding source breakout here. Because the project came in about $120,000 over budget, we're recommending to share that over a budget amount equally between the park dedication and the tax increment financing amounts. And as you can see, there are smaller amounts that would be paid by the grants and the 71 France developer through our development agreement. The, because of the overage, the staff recommendation is to remove the art features. In your packet, there were two different elective art pieces that we considered purchase for. One was oxymoron, the other one was the sandhill cranes. Those two features totaled 25, or $31,750. The staff recommendation is to consider those at a later date and not include them for purchase at this time because we are over budget due to the bid. I think that's all I have of note, and I'll stand for your questions.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. So if we don't include art, it's $31,000 in the scheme of a million and a half dollar Where can we get that? I mean, it seems like it's not a stretch in a million and a half dollar project to come up with $31,000, but if we don't have it, we don't have it.
There are a couple, Councilmember Brindle and members of council, there are a couple sources of revenue that you could avail yourselves of if this was a priority. One would be the park dedication funds that come from the development that surround this, the Byerlees development. Some of them are being spent in this project, but not all of them.
Okay.
You cannot, however, use the tax increment revenue from the Centennial Lake District or the HRA funds. Those, public art is not a permissible expense for those. Or, as we've done in other public art projects, we could do a private funding initiative like we did at 50th and France for the dog.
Spalding.
Spalding.
But this is something that we could consider after this evening. We don't have to come up with a solution for that tonight.
Indeed. The project is being designed, and Mr. Bittner can explain how, but the project is being designed to accommodate the art features, whatever they're going to be, with the basic design that's being proposed. So if the council does decide to make this decision tonight, you can. If you decide to defer it, while you think of how to finance it, we can make that decision at a later time as well.
Member Stotan, did you have a comment?
I did. Question for Mr. Bittner. On page two of your staff report, in the chart that you have at the bottom of construction phase costs, a cost reimbursable by 71 France agreement of $11,568. Can you explain what that is?
In the agreement with 71 France, they agreed to pay for all of the connecting trails that run from their property to the promenade, so the east-west trails. Can back up a little bit here. There are two of those. One is at the south end of their building that comes from their bike parking area, and that comes out of their building and intersects with the promenade as I'm indicating on the screen. The other is just off the screen, sorry, in this corner here, and just north of this one, so, sorry, I didn't have it available, but this connects into their property. During the course of construction, there's, you know, we've shown how far we're willing to build it, but there are, we may take some of that out and they may build it depending on where they are in their timeframe, or as in the agreement, we would be reimbursed by them for those segments.
And so that's where in the funding by source, there's a reimbursable and an equal amount.
That's right.
Now, we had initially slated to do this project a year ago, is that right?
That's correct.
And the reason for the delay, what was the reason for the delay?
The developer of 71 France, in construction of building unit A, which is just off the screen to the south here, we purchased Outlot A, which overlaps the western portion of this pond and trail. They needed to occupy that space to build their building for longer than we had anticipated. So we gave them an agreement and easement over that property that they have to vacate by April 1st of 2015, early last spring.
So my question is whether it's costing us any more by waiting?
By waiting. The bidding climate, you know, will change from year to year. It may cost us a bit more, but those might not be real dollars. They're inflation adjusted.
So we didn't bid it?
Yeah.
We didn't get that far last year, right?
Yeah, that's right, we didn't get that far last year. There was some additional costs that we incurred on the professional service side to hold off on our design briefly, and those are included in the scope of services for URS Incorporated and their attachment number one.
I would add that we also made some commitments to the adjoining property owners that we would back off on our project for a year to enable them to stage and construct their project. So there, we don't, we don't have a written agreement about that, but we did commit that we would bid and hopefully do the project this year to accommodate that sort of construction staging that they did last year.
Okay, thank you.
Also, as I recall, we have an economic benefit here. We got the park dedication fee in full for all three buildings, where they're still only constructing the first building, so that was some benefit to us as well. All right, is there a motion with regard to this matter? A question? A couple questions. Member Stewart?
So I think you said we were $120,000 over budget, less the $32,000 for the art, leaves us still about $88,000 over budget?
That's incorrect. If we chose to fund the art... If we chose to fund the art, then it would be an additional $31,000.
Oh, so the $120,000 is net of the art?
That's right.
And so where does that money come from?
The staff recommendation is to split that overage equally between the park dedication fees. So previously in the estimate in the capital improvement program, the, it would have been $580,000 would have come from the park dedication. Now we're recommending $640,000, so an additional 12 units at $5,000 each from the park dedication. Those are funds that, you know, they're, they could have been used elsewhere.
Right.
Similarly, with the tax increment funds. I understand that Economic Development Director Nuenendorf has quite a long list of different projects from asking of the HRA's funding source, so it competes with those dollars as well in that list.
And was there any thought given to, again, this only defers part of the cost issue, but I see on the picture that's on the screen right now, there are a whole row of trees. If you were to put in this year only every other tree and then put in, fill in the gaps next year, how much would that save?
That specific example?
I mean, I, did we give any creative thought to bringing the cost down in ways?
We did give some. To get to the scope of the budget overage of $120,000, you would be talking about almost a different project. So removing the entire pond, for example, and replacing it with a section of stream instead, it seemed pretty drastic where you ask for redesign and rebid potentially.
Right.
So how much money are we talking in the park dedication fee? There's what, 230, 270 apartments? I can't remember. How many apartments are at Seventy-One France? It's $5,000 per unit, so that's a million and a quarter by my estimation.
Very good math, Mary. Miss, or Councilmember Brindle. After the, after the purchase of the outlot, it comes to just over a million. So we paid $177,771.50 for the.
All right. So if you spread the overage among, using, using the park dedication fees, it looks like you're using 465 plus 105. You're using, I mean, you're $120,000 over budget, but even so, you are using park dedication fees to fund some of this? Yes?
True.
Okay, not just the overage?
Not just the overage. So the total funding from the park dedication comes to $640,000.
Right.
That's after an additional 600 over the estimate that we had in the capital improvement program.
Okay, so $640,000 gets us to where we are without the overage or with the overage?
With.
With, okay, great. All right, so we have used roughly half of the park dedication fee at this point?
Over half.
Over half by how much?
So if it.
Because that, that looks like to me to be about half.
Right, but you have to remember that we also, in the pre-construction phase, already purchased the outlot.
Oh, the outlot, the outlot.
For $177,771.
All right, got it. Okay, so I guess we should put the brakes on.
Still a half a million park dedication fee left.
There's still, you're right. So what is our priority for the use of park dedication fees? Is it for the park? Or is it for other concerns?
This is, this is the park.
I know, that's my point. We should put art in the park if the park is our priority.
I can tell you that, you know, our, our, our recommendation to you is based on our values and our concerns that, that we're bringing a project to you that we think is important to you, is important to us. So it was a little bit over budget. We wanted to bring it to you with the hope that if we could maybe take something out of it, it would be more appealing. We do have park dedication money available to do this purchase. It doesn't substantially impact that public art is a permissible expense out of a park dedication fee. Normally, when we have a development that gives us a park dedication fee, we try to find a park use for it that's generally adjacent to where the money came from. It's no, there's no legal requirement that we do that, but we try to do that when we can. The best example of that is the Waters Project. But this, this is directly adjacent to the property that generated the park dedication fee.
Yep. Well, I guess my feeling would be you've got $120,000 to make up, you've got a half, you've got $500,000 approximately to use to make it up. I don't know, I would do it. That's how I do my finances. Am I concerned about the promenade being over budget? Not at this, not at this level. I'm not. Because the promenade is part of a park system that's so widely used and it's such an icon that we can't do it second rate. We can't stop short of doing it the way it really ought to be done. It connects to Centennial Lakes, which really, I mean, you mentioned Centennial Lakes to somebody in New York City and they know what it is. And there are architects, there are land planners who come here to study Centennial Lakes to see what they can do in their community. We can't shortchange this, in my opinion. It's part of a gem, so I would not step back from fully funding this.
Member Stotan?
Mr. Mayor, maybe to follow up with Manager Neil or Mr. Bittner. So a couple of questions. One, do we have a kind of history in terms of what we do on bids and percentages over what we estimated? I mean, this 10% over, is that unusual? Is that, you know, is there any, can you give me any? I'm, I'm just trying to find a comparable. Is it, would it be usual for us to go ahead if we were 10% over?
I'm going to ask, maybe Director Milner's in a better position to answer that question because he bids the most projects. What would you say to that?
Mayor, members of council, I'd say that it really depends on the project funding. You know, if it's a specially assessed project, then we really have heartburn going 10% over because then we have different statutes we have to follow. But if it's a utility funded project, then we got a little bit more leeway. So it's really what level of service we're providing by the specific project and what those funding sources are and how flexible those are. So as Ross stated with the park dedication, there's a little wiggle room, but there's also a little in the TIF. To answer one of the other questions about the park dedication fees Director Katray brought up, those bridges at Centennial Lakes need to be replaced. Some of those pedestrian bridges in this park dedication fee might be going to some of those bridges, so we also have to consider that with some of the other improvements down.
So then, Director Milner, the other follow-up I'd ask is just, is kind of a professional judgment from all of you about the prospect, if we waited and rebid, what's your judgment about what happens then?
Yeah, your earlier question on whether or not we got good bids.
I asked the reverse before.
Yeah, so I'll kind of, my opinion on that is that the timing of this project would have been bid out in early summer. We bid other projects in that timing and had horrible results to the bids. They were super high, the contractors were all full. This, doing this in the middle of winter bidding gives us a much better opportunity to fill their needs for work and we think we got a much better number now, not, maybe not much better, but a better number now than we would have bidding in early summer last year, just with the bidding climate we saw. And that we're currently seeing this winter from some of the projects we've done ourselves and also some of the other ones that were, other communities have been bidding. So we think it's a favorable time to be opening bids.
A couple of other projects that we've bid recently, the Driving Range Project and the Elevator Project for the South Ramp are also projects that are coming in at estimate or maybe a smidge higher than estimate. So it's, it's, it's a number that we can, given the, the funding sources, we can afford to do. It's a project that's been out there for a while. I think it'd be, I think it would be good for the council to move it forward.
And you certainly did get three bids and this is, you know, this is low by almost, well, by $250,000 off of over the top bid, so it's not that it wasn't competitively bid, but thank you for indulging my, my, my questions.
Another observation, it seems to me that it's a bit of a misnomer to say that it's not within budget. It's, it's a little overestimate.
Yeah.
I mean, what we did was we estimated what this thing was going to cost and then based on the conversation we had at the work session, you came back with some beautiful enhancements, the natural rock for the sides of the pond and the channel, the colored stained and formed concrete for the channel and the pond bottoms. So it's not surprising to me that it went up a little bit from an estimation standpoint and we, you know, if we want to do it right, we're going to spend a little bit more money. So I would be supportive of this the way it is.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would move that we, that we adopt the staff recommendation and move forward as recommended with the caveat that I'm sensitive to Member Brindle's yearning for the public art and I feel similarly, but perhaps it's an issue that we can take up when our fifth council member is here and we can get the benefit of her wisdom and as Manager Neil said, you know, we don't have to do it right now. We can kind of sort through that with a little more time.
Second?
And I appreciate.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just quickly, I do appreciate that and knowing the added perspective of the bridges, which really are in much need of repair and replacement. So, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second to authorize the award of the bid on the promenade Phase Four to Meisinger Construction.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Couple more items on the main council agenda. We've got a couple of new wine on sale and 3-2 liquor license requests. First one is for Tinfish, which will be occupying the space at Braemar Clubhouse. Clerk Mangan.
Well, I'm pleased to present to you the application from Chef and Athena Priest. They've applied, submitted all the necessary documentation, have been vetted by the police department and we have a positive recommendation and I would ask you to consider favorably their applications.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the issuance of a new wine on sale and 3-2 liquor license to SNP Enterprises DBA the Tinfish. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm, I'm really curious relating to the earlier conversation we had about the golf facility and whether or not we can keep those tee times filled as, as we redesign and get that golf course really brought up to class. Is there, many golf clubs have people who drive around in golf carts and sell alcohol. Do we have that at Braemar?
We do.
Okay. So, so there's a license there already of some sort? And this, this just specifically is then for the Tinfish facility because it's different people doing it.
But I do not think we have a spirits license.
We do not.
For the, for the golf carts. Cannot buy a hard liquor drink off a golf cart.
And well, I, at some point, I'd be interested in finding out if, if that would make a difference on whether or not we'd get those tee times filled, so.
It's been an issue of great discussion at.
It has been.
At Braemar Clubhouse and we've gone back and forth and, and most of the vendors we've spoken with are, tell us it's probably not worth their investment, so, but we are continuing to look at it.
Thank you.
Good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of issuing the new wine on sale and 3-2 liquor license to Tinfish? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried.
When are you open?
Everything's done.
When everything's done.
You were, you were scheduled for April.
We were, we were scheduled for April and if the, if the ground is raining, not white, we will do our best to be able to serve everybody as, you know, whether the kitchen's completely done or not, but everything looks like it's still going on track for April.
Good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
And they are our, our caterer this year for the volunteer recognition dinner.
Oh, excellent. Look forward to that.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Next matter, Clerk Mangan, you have this one as well as application of Gray Ghost, Gray Ghost Grub LLC DBA Hello Pizza.
Correct. There has been a corporate ownership change and our ordinance requires a new license for any change in ownership greater than 10%. And so for that reason, there was an application and it has received again a favorable background and all of the documentation required has been submitted, so I would request your favorable consideration of the new wine and beer license to Gray Ghost Grub LLC doing business as Hello Pizza.
All right, we have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second?
Second, we've got a motion in a second to approve a new wine on sale and 3-2 liquor license to Gray Ghost Grub LLC DBA Hello Pizza due to an ownership change, change in control. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And correspondence and petitions, anything other than what was on the dais this evening?
We have some donations.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, thank you, Mary. Next matter is 8H Resolution 2015-22, accepting various grants and donations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the resolution accepting donations for the city. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this reporting period are to the Braemar Memorial Fund, Centennial Lakes Crime Prevention Fund, gave a significant amount of money, in excess of $12,000, their falls into the arts proceeds, at least part of them. Edina Arts Center, again, Crime Prevention Fund. And the Edina Police Department. Crime Prevention Fund gave some very generous gifts there as well for the canine related matters. Total looks like it's close to $20,000, Mary.
For canine only, yes. I, and Chief Nelson is here. Would you like to say a few words about our new canine and all that? I forget the dog, I, I forget everything about it, but I know the dog is here.
The dog is here and we took possession of the dog two weeks ago tonight. So the dog is with the handler. The handler is Sean Young. The dog is a black German Shepherd, looks similar to Diesel, 13 months old and his name is Blitz.
Blitz.
He will start training beginning of March.
And Sean was Diesel's handler, right?
No, no, that was Mike Seeger.
Mike Seeger.
So new handler.
Yeah. Terrific, thank you. And the, the, the Crime Prevention Fund donations coming out of Fall Into the Arts proceeds are split evenly between Centennial Lakes and the Edina Arts Center, each in the amount of $12,096.78. This was the first year that we had the director of the Edina Arts Center actually run the, manage the Fall Into the Arts and it was extremely well done. And I think that's reflected in this. It's also the first year we operated under the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding and so there's, there's a lot of things that kind of firmed up our relationship with the city, but also really, how we run Fall Into the Arts. It was terrific this year. So thank you and it's a pleasure. I'm, I'm on that board and it's, it's always fun to see the money go where it needs to go.
Thank you. Aviation noise update, anything, Manager Neil?
We have all of you pre-registered for the noise, Aviation Noise Summit in Washington, DC.
Mr. Mayor, we kind of skipped over the correspondence and I'd like to go back to that if we may. Just with the sheer volume of correspondence that we had regarding issues that really belongs before the school board, I think we'd be remiss not to at least comment on that. There are a number of members of the community who would like this body to encourage the school board to change its policies regarding open enrollment. school board to change its policies regarding open enrollment. I think that this is not a topic that's actually appropriate for this body to comment on, but I do think that we ought to say that in open forum, so I'm getting it out there.
All right. Thank you for your thoughts and your opinion. Mayor and council comments. Right back to Member Stewart.
Yeah, I want to echo what my fellow council members said about the interviews. We spent three days, three evenings, I should say, interviewing candidates for the commissions and boards, and I too was impressed by all of the people, and I want to thank all of the dedicated members of this community who are interested in serving, and, boy, it made for some very difficult decision-making, but I think we have just terrific commissions and boards as a result of these great people wanting to serve, so thank you for that. On February the 12th, I attended a Explore Edina gathering at the Weston Hotel. That was a great opportunity to see what our Explore Edina group is doing. Thank you for that. On February the 14th, on Saturday, I attended a League of Women Voters Session on Protecting Our Food Supply, which is very interesting. Our local League of Women Voters does some great programs, and encourage all of you who have an interest to look into that. Also, the same day, Saturday the 14th, went to a robot reveal at the high school. I'm going to be the first to put on my Green Machine sticker. The robot team at Edina High School, I think, is only 10 years old, and they've done some fantastic things. They've got a website that gets, I think it's like a million hits from all over the country and actually all over the world, because they do such a great job of describing what they do in the program there, and these young people who build these robots just do an amazing job. This year, they actually built two identical robots. Before they compete, they actually have to have, the robot they're going to compete with goes into quarantine for a day, and this gives them a chance to keep practicing on the second robot while the first robot is in. They actually just put the final touches on it, on the robot, on Friday night before the Saturday reveal, so they were only just learning how to drive their own robot and make it function. But pretty amazing work that our young people do. Also want to give a little shout-out to the Edina High School Girls Hockey Team, heading to the state hockey tournament. I believe their first game in the state tournament is this Thursday. I don't know the exact time. I know it's during the workday, because I cannot attend. But also, to Taylor Williamson from that team, who you may have seen in this morning's Star Tribune, was named the Girls Hockey Player of the Year for the state of Minnesota. It's the first time ever that a girl from Edina High School has been named to that honor, so great tip of the hat to her. Coming up, on Wednesday the 18th, there's a meeting of the Minnehaha Watershed District, for those who are interested. I think it's at 6 o'clock, and I don't know the location. And then, also want to encourage those who have an interest, the Edina High School Pops Concert begins this Friday, goes this Friday, Saturday, and then next Thursday, Friday, Saturday. There are numerous performances, so. Great program, and again, the young people in our community do a terrific job, so.
Thank you. Member Brindl.
I really, I was going to mention the information about open enrollment, and that's already been mentioned. One of the letters in our correspondence that we received tonight is from Oasis for Youth, kind of a disturbing letter if you're a parent. There's a woman from Oasis for Youth, who will meet with two students at Edina High School who are at risk of becoming homeless. So, it's not a problem that is somebody else's problem in another community. When we think of Beacon coming into our community, and some of the other emergency shelters for youth, there are kids in Edina who need that. So, that's humbling, but I just thought I would mention that so that we can kind of just have a perspective that just because we are a community that prides ourself, so many of us are so proud of our community, and we pride ourselves on the community that we make for ourselves. We do have, we do have people among us who are troubled, so if you are in that, in the position to provide support, please do.
Thank you, Mary.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I've brought with me some stickers from the Green Machine. I knew that Member Stewart was there, because when I got there, they asked me to sign the, looks like a piece of material handling equipment, very cleverly done. Bob's name was already on one of the bars, so I kind of signed across from Bob, and he did a great job explaining what they're up to. Just year after year, they do such a tremendous job, and it's, I think it's such an encouraging thing to hear that in our state where hockey is king, there are now more kids in robotics than there are playing hockey.
Starting in kindergarten.
Yeah, now they start them in kindergarten with these Lego sets, so all the way through now. It used to be just the high school kids, and now it's all the way through. Earlier on Saturday, before the Edina Robotics reveal, and that's basically the day they box up their device and keep it boxed up until the tournament starts. I attended a memorial service for John Navatchis, who was a longtime member of the merchant group down at 50th and France, just a terrific guy. We're going to miss him so much. There were 300 people there at the memorial service at Edina Country Club, and Trace Lund gave him Merchant of the Year Award this past summer, and it was, it was really an appropriate sort of award for John, so our best to his family. Sunday, as I mentioned earlier, my wife and I attended the Chinese New Year Celebration, which took place over at Valley View. They had it decorated, you can't believe the beautiful decorations. They spent 10 hours, I think, doing the preparation work for the event. They had, I think, over 170 people participating in the program that they had with dancing and singing. They had over 1,500 people in attendance. So, I encouraged all the rest of them that weren't living in Edina, move to Edina, to build our Chinese-American community.
And I think actually, the Chinese New Year begins this Thursday, with the, it's the beginning of the year of the sheep, so Geng Shif Chai.
I think it might be the goat, but.
Yeah, it's a goat or sheep, depending on which district you're in, yes.
And then, let's see, the Golf Course Task Force has its meeting tomorrow morning with Architect Mandell, and they'll be continuing their work and coming back to us with a recommendation, both to the Park Board and to the City Council, in the very near future, I believe, early March. That's it for me, Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. Just first, as a reminder that Congressman Ellison will be here at 2 o'clock on Thursday. He'll be in the mayor's conference room, and that is his meeting to drop by and meet with you. And we've also invited Department Director's staff, and if there's any federal issues you want to talk with him about, he'll be here for about 30 minutes, I believe. Just a note, I noted to council members, but we're also releasing a statement tomorrow regarding the dismissal of the lawsuit Citizens to Preserve the Edina Regional Medical District versus the city over the 66 West Land Use Changes, so that was, that was good news this week. An issue that's both good news and bad news is that our water pumpage in last year, 2014, was 2.368 billion gallons of water. That's how much water we pumped out of the earth, up to the top of the earth, and then treated and then sent out, is the lowest level of water pumpage since 1998. And that's good, because it's good for the aquifers to have that rest. It's bad, because we're in the water-selling business, and there was way too much free water falling out of the sky for us to do a good business in that area. So, next, at our next work session, we're actually going to talk to you and give you kind of a state-of-the utilities presentation, and we'll show you what happens when we don't sell enough water. It's not great. One of the things we're going to be talking to you about at the next council meeting is giving you a recommendation on the selection of a vendor to do our Quality of Life Survey. Our last two Quality of Life surveys have been done by Morris Leatherman, but we are seeing a number of other cities that are really pleased with the work that's being done by the National Research Center. National Research Center is a national competitor for some of the local vendors who do the kind of work that Morris Leatherman do. And other cities in the Twin Cities that use them include Eden Prairie, Bloomington, Minneapolis, Lakeville, Maple Grove, Dakota County, Olmsted County, Scott County, Carver County. So, there's some major other local governments that use the National Research Center. They have a different methodology, they have a different cost structure, so we're doing some, we're doing some comparisons right now on those two vendors. I think the most important thing that we've got to make sure is that we maintain the longitudinal integrity of our data. So, we want to be able to compare results from 15 to 13 to 11. That's valuable to us, and valuable to, well, to all of us, to you and to us. We are scheduling a closed session for the council on March 3rd at 5 o'clock, to have a discussion with you about Weber Woods, and having some discussion about the most recent counteroffer that we received from the city of Minneapolis regarding the potential purchase of that land. Finally, you probably have noticed that Chief Nelson has joined us, and he joined us at our last meeting, and he'll probably join us at future meetings, and I think we may see him or members of his command staff in that chair, and they'll be a regular feature here to answer all your questions about public safety. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Your Honor, at the work session, you wanted to take action amending the work plan for the Planning Commission?
That's correct, thank you, before we adjourn the council meeting. We had, we had a modification, proposed modification of the work plan for the Planning Commission at our work session this evening, and I'll entertain a motion to approve that amended work plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to approve the Planning Commission's amended work plan for 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried.
Anything further with respect to council business? Otherwise, we'll adjourn and go into the HRA for just a moment. All right, council meeting adjourned. Call to order of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Member Brindl.
Here.
Commissioner Staunton.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Chair Havlin.
Here. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion in a second to approve the meeting agenda, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the HRA for December 2nd, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion in a second to approve the December 2nd, 2014 HRA minutes, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this actually is December 3rd, 2014.
It was because it happened after midnight.
Oh. Okay.
Yep.
I stand corrected.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried.
Next, we have a repeat of an item we had on the main council agenda. That's a request for purchase, the authorization of the award of bid for the promenade for, promenade Phase Four project to Meisinger Construction. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to authorize the award of bid by the HRA for the promenade Phase Four project for Associated Professional Services. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried.
Any other business for the HRA?
Nope.
HRA stands adjourned.